Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation by Pastor Ryan Giles of Kingsview Free Will Baptist Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Ruby Start of Girl Scout Troop 1096. Please stand as you are able. Would you pray with me? God, we come before you today with gratitude for this day and the opportunity to serve the people of Oklahoma City. We ask for your wisdom to rest upon these council members as they deliberate on matters that affect our community. Grant them clarity of mind, courage to make difficult decisions, and hearts full of compassion for those they serve. May Oklahoma City be a place of peace, justice, and opportunity for all its citizens, and bless the work of this council, and let their efforts bring about the common good. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in this pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Giles, and thank you, Ruby. All right. I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we will begin with item three, Office of the Mayor. And we have a lot of presentations, so I will make my way to the front. Let's see. Maybe we'll start with code compliance. That might empty half the room. That way we can give everybody a little space. So where's our folks from code compliance? Yeah, come on up. That's what you're here for. Yeah, come to the front. We're gonna say a few words after we read this. All right. Well, we have a great opportunity this morning to show some gratitude to all our folks who work in code enforcement. And it is, in fact, Code Compliance Month. And so I would ask the clerk to tell us a little bit more about this by reading this proclamation.
Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety and welfare of Oklahoma City residents by enforcing municipal codes and ordinances related to various issues, including building zoning, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers often face challenging and demanding issues as they work to improve living and working conditions for residents and businesses in Oklahoma City. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing safety, and preserving property values. And whereas code enforcement officers achieve these goals through their knowledge and application of housing zoning and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of Oklahoma City. And whereas the city of Oklahoma City recognizes the work of code enforcement officers and emphasizes the importance of raising awareness of the value of code enforcement throughout our community. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Code Compliance Month in Oklahoma City, and we call upon our community to join us in recognizing and expressing our appreciation for the dedication and service of the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers.
Well, thank you. Couldn't have said it any better myself. So we have Brock Rowe here from the department to speak a little bit to Code Compliance Month and the work that your folks do every day.
Thank you. I am just overjoyed by the staff that I have. They work so hard. They go out and they deal with some really hard situations sometimes, and they sometimes put their lives on the line, and they get in some sticky situations. And they are diligent. They never complain. They never grumble about things. And they continue to do the hard work to make sure that the city is safe and clean. And I think that's incredible, and I appreciate each and every one of you for doing that. You guys rock.
Thank you. Why don't we hear it for our code enforcement officers? And they can just head on out if they want. Thank you so much. All right. As they make their way stage right, why don't we bring our fire department folks up here? We're joined by Chief Kelly and some of his leadership team to hear a little bit more about Fire Prevention Month. And so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas in 2023, the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to more than 95,000 calls for emergency assistance and performed 20 structured fire rescues. And whereas, fire claimed the lives of eight of our residents and injured eight others in 2023. And whereas, also in 2023, property loss due to fire was more than $27 million. And whereas, the Oklahoma City Fire Department was able to prevent more than $1 billion in potential property loss during 2023. And whereas, the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by fire, not only for the residents they serve, but also for their coworkers who are injured or killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the Oklahoma City Fire Department considers fire prevention as critical as fire suppression. And whereas, the employees of the Oklahoma City Fire Department actively engage in year-round risk reduction programs to raise awareness of fire safety and teach best practices to help reduce the frequency and severity of fires in our community. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City, and encourage all citizens to learn about risk reduction and fire safety, and to apply these practices at home, at work, and throughout our city.
Thank you. Well, we are so grateful, obviously, for the work of what I think we all consider to be the finest fire department in the United States. And the department is led by Chief Kelly, but he has deferred today to Chief Bennett to say a few words. And where's Chief Bennett? There you are.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Holt, the city council, city manager Craig Freeman as well. This proclamation speaks to our preventative efforts that we do throughout the month of October during Fire Prevention Month. It's something that we do on a year-round basis, or on a yearly basis as a department. You know, the majority of the personnel that you see up here are from the Fire Prevention Services Division of the Oklahoma City Fire Department. But as you'll see, not only during Fire Prevention Month, but again throughout the year, that this is an effort, you know, risk reduction and fire and life safety prevention is an effort on behalf of all of the members of the fire department. And that's uniform personnel, non-uniform personnel, our professional staff. Everyone believes in the mission of meeting the need. And again, we wouldn't be able to do those things without the support of our residents and our city leadership. So thank you for all that you do. That's all I have.
Yeah, well, thank you. Let's hear it for our fire prevention and our fire department. Appreciate you all. Thank you very much. Okay, why don't we bring our friends from the Arts and Humanities up here? Come on down. All right. Well, October is Arts and Humanities Month, and we'd like to learn a little bit more about that. And so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts, humanities, and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country. And whereas, since its earliest days, Oklahoma City has flourished in part due to the creative spirit and vision of our residents. And whereas, we rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and understanding of the nation and the world. And whereas, the arts and humanities play an important role in telling our city's story and reminding us of the truths that connect us. And whereas, the insight gained from watching a thought-provoking documentary or discovering a compelling novel sparks moments of joy, awe, and sorrow. And whereas, from symphonies that bring comedy and tragedy to life, to public art that challenges the boundaries of the world around us, these works add texture to our lives and reveal the spirit of our city. And whereas, cultivating the talents and minds of our young people and ensuring they have access to the arts and humanities are critical to our city's growth and prosperity. And whereas, this month, we pay tribute to the tremendous power of the arts and humanities to unite us and introduce us to new ideas. We also celebrate the ways our city's rich arts heritage has socially and economically strengthened our community and inspired us. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 to be Arts and Humanities Month in Oklahoma City.
Well, it is such an integral part of our city, both culturally, emotionally, and economically, to welcome the arts and encourage them. And we're so grateful for the work of all the people up here, and they all have amazing stories. And I wish we had time to hear them all today. But we have one designated speaker. He may pass off to others. I'm not sure. But Randy Marks, who serves in the position that was created here about a decade ago, originally held by Robbie Kinzel. Randy's doing a terrific job serving as a liaison between the city government and the Arts and Humanities community. And Randy, we'd love to hear a few words from you this morning.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good morning. I am Randy Marks, Program Planner in Arts and Cultural Affairs. And thank you, Mayor, city council, city manager, for your strong and steady support for the work of our office. We really appreciate it. Also, thank you for your support of Arts and Humanities generally in Oklahoma City. I'm going to hand the mic to Caroline Lowry, and she will talk about humanities, and then she'll pass it off to Leondre Latimer.
Well, good morning, everyone. Okay. Good morning, everybody. I'm Caroline Lowry. I'm the Executive Director for Oklahoma Humanities. We provide access to and resources for the humanities statewide. We're so thankful to not only Mayor Holt, but to our city council for your steadfast support of infrastructure, public infrastructure for the arts and the humanities citywide. I like to say, if you're not understanding what the humanities are, if the arts are the what? The beautiful public art, the sculpture that you see, the inspiring painting. The humanities are the why. Why is it important? How does that speak to my story? How does that make me feel? How does that expose me to a diverse perspective of someone else? So again, we're just so excited to celebrate October nationally as Arts and Humanities Month, and we appreciate all of our citizens' creative and contemplative efforts in the Arts and Humanities this month. Leondre.
Thank you. My name is Leondre Latimer. I'm Project Manager for Arts and Cultural Affairs. If I could leave you with a quote, I would just say, the earth without art is just eh, you know? Maybe you all have heard that before. If you haven't heard that quote before, I want you to quote me next time you say it, okay? But I think it's true, right? As mentioned before, arts and humanities impacts our everyday life. It shapes everything we see, our culture, our sense of morality, ethics. And I think Oklahoma City has a lot to be proud of in terms of what we've achieved in Arts and Humanities. And I think we have such a far way to go in the other things that we'll achieve. So I thank you all for coming to support us. And we're just a small part of the great impact that has made Oklahoma City a great place for arts and humanities. So thank you all, and looking forward to being here and continuing to support the arts and humanities. Thank you.
All right. Let's hear it for our cultural community. Oh, good morning. Thank you. All right. Why don't we bring up our pedestrian safety month guests? All right. Among the other things you've heard, October is also Pedestrian Safety Month, as we all know. And we'd love to learn a little bit more about that. And so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, the safety and well-being of all residents of Oklahoma City is of paramount importance. And whereas, the city of Oklahoma City is committed to fostering an environment where pedestrian safety and accessibility are top priorities. And whereas, pedestrians play a vital role in the life of our city by contributing to its vibrancy, economic vitality, and sense of community. And whereas, pedestrian safety is a shared responsibility requiring the cooperation of all community members. And whereas, raising awareness about pedestrian safety and promoting safe practices for both pedestrians and automobile drivers can significantly reduce the number of collisions, injuries, and fatalities on our roadways. And whereas, the city of Oklahoma City has secured tens of millions of dollars to improve sidewalk and trail infrastructure through the Better Street Safer City program, multiple federal grants, and the MAPS4 initiative. And whereas, designating the month of October as Pedestrian Safety Month provides an opportunity to educate residents and visitors about the importance of pedestrian safety through various outreach and educational activities. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 to be Pedestrian Safety Month in Oklahoma City.
Well, thank you. And we have Max Harris here, along with some of his friends, to talk about pedestrian safety. Max, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I do hope we are all friends. So thanks for bringing awareness to this issue. It really complements the city's initiative right now to create a Vision Zero plan, which is a grant-funded plan that seeks to reduce and ultimately eliminate fatal traffic collisions on our city's streets. There are far too many of them every year, of course. And there's a new draft plan that we're revealing, I believe, today that we're seeking public input on. So part of that is just a plug for seeking people's comments on that plan. And the other big part is people around me here who sit on various advisory groups and boards that help implement pedestrian safety infrastructure. It's a slog. We have a long way to go, but it's incremental. And you all do, none of it is really possible without you all. So wanted to acknowledge the work that you all do and many others, really, because it's many hands, to make our city more safe, more accessible, you know, our public facilities more ADA compliant, and continuing that work. So appreciate the opportunity to raise this issue.
Absolutely. Let's hear it for everybody working for pedestrian safety in our city. All right. Detective Sellers, why don't you come forward? Detective Michael Sellers is our Employee of the Month, and we would like to learn a little bit more about you, detective. So I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Detective Michael Sellers has been a city employee for 28 years and is a sergeant in the police department. And whereas Detective Michael Sellers is a member of the Violent Crimes Investigation Unit of the Criminal Intelligence Group and serves as a task force officer with the Federal Bureau of Investigation. And whereas Detective Michael Sellers' primary assignment is cellular surveillance, where he uses surveillance to establish the location of fugitives and endangered people. And whereas Detective Michael Sellers is on 24/7 status and is summoned weekly to assist with investigations. And whereas Detective Michael Sellers investigated the whereabouts of a person involved in a high-profile workplace murder and located and identified the suspect. And whereas Detective Michael Sellers spent many days helping recover a child's body that was missing from the serial area. And whereas Detective Michael Sellers goes above and beyond using extraordinary techniques to solve critical time-sensitive crimes and is a resource for police departments across the state. And whereas, this council desires to recognize Detective Michael Sellers for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Detective Michael Sellers, October 2024, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Well, thank you. And thank you Detective Sellers for your 28 years of service. We're incredibly grateful. This is a resolution, I'm reminded now. Why don't we go ahead and get some motions on that before we hear from you, detective? All right. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye.
City Clerk and Mayor, I'd like to vote yes, but my screen won't let me type.
All right. Passes unanimously. Again, Detective Sellers, we're so grateful for your service and that of your colleagues, and we'd love to hear a few words from you this morning.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, city council, city manager. I'd also like to thank my command staff. But this couldn't be possible, what I do, if it wasn't for the guys and girls that I work with. They're always there to support me and help me. But with that said, too, I'm a second-generation Oklahoma City police officer, and my son is now a third generation on this department, and soon hopefully have my son along the department. But I couldn't do this without my family and my wife, and her love and support over this whole time. So I thank y'all.
Well, thank you. And thank you for your family being a one-man recruitment operation. We need, we need all the good folks we can get. So thank you so much, detective. Let's hear it for Detective Sellers. All right. Charle, come on down. Charle Harper. Charle is our Teacher of the Month, and we'd like to learn a little bit more about you. And so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Charle Harper has been named Teacher of the Month for October 2024 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas, Charle is a passionate educator with over a decade of experience in public education and service, a Teach For America alumnus, and current grade-level chair and seventh-grade math teacher at KIPP OKC College Prep. And whereas, Charle takes pride in creating, engaging, and innovative learning environments that inspire and challenge her students. And whereas, Charle is committed to fostering academic growth and achieving impactful results that shift the trajectories of children's lives and expand their opportunities. And whereas, Charle finds great joy in teaching and has an unwavering commitment to excellence. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Charle Harper on her selection as October 2024 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you. So Charle is one of many success stories I have met that came out of the Teach For America program. America program in that Charle was from California, TFA brought her here, and she's still here in May, forever, we hope. So now this is a resolution, so let's see if we can get a motion and a second for this. Got a motion and a second. I wish to vote aye. Please cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Well, Charle, thank you so much for bringing your gift to Oklahoma City, and thank you for continuing to serve our young people. It obviously means so much to us, and we're glad that we had this opportunity to show that gratitude this morning. We'd love to hear a few words from you if you so desire.
Of course. Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Ms. Harper, and as the mayor said, thank you all as well. I am originally from California, and so it is an honor and a privilege to be here. Education has always been an extreme passion of mine, and I get to share that with my four little ones. And so with all the classes that I have, I get to make sure that I make them know just how amazing and smart that they truly are and how great they can be. And so as they learn and embark on their journey to sharing their own success stories, I take honor and privilege in being able to give them that oomph in math, science, or reading. So thank you all for your opportunity here.
Absolutely. Well, let's thank Charle for your amazing service. Thank you so much. Okay, we have one more item on Office of the Mayor, and that is Item 3C. That is a resolution approving travel expenses for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Winter Meeting in Washington in January of 2025. We could take a motion on that. We have a motion and a second. Passes seven to one, and with the required six affirmative votes. This brings us to Item 4, Items from Council. We have two today, and they both come from the Council Legislative Committee, which I chair and which met a few weeks ago to go through our annual process of determining our federal and state legislative programs. Jane Abraham, of course, always ably assists us in this effort and is here this morning to make a presentation about these programs. I don't know, we can divide it out however you like, if you want to do it all at once, or I don't know how you plan to.
Maybe start with the federal.
Federal, then we'll vote, and then do state.
Vote, and then do state.
Sounds good. All right, well, 4A is up first then, and that is the federal legislative program.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Jane Abraham, in the city manager's office. So first of all, I'd just like to run through really quickly, excuse me, the process that we use to come up with legislative issues every year. So first, the city manager asks department heads, usually in the summer, for items that they believe require a legislative fix at either the state or the federal level. And then requests can also come from individual council members or other groups. The items are considered by the Council Legislative Committee, which reviews them, and then they make a recommendation to council. And then from your approval process here, then we move forward to implement the issues. So let's start with the federal program. So I'm just going to talk about really the things that have changed, because quite frankly, our federal legislative agenda doesn't really change very much from year to year. We always want to advocate for transportation funding to complement our investment, et cetera. One that changed a little bit this year was to advocate for the Neighborhood Homes Investment Act and other efforts to invest in affordable housing. That's a huge issue nationwide and here in Oklahoma City, and so we want to advocate for that. And then, under our support and monitor issues, we added back in, so for many, many years, we supported the First Americans Museum and as it was being constructed and put together. And so we continue to support the First Americans Museum, and then also the connecting infrastructure that is being put in that area with the I-35 connection and just all of the connections to get to the First Americans Museum. And then, under, as support-monitor issues continue, we've got the support for the Historic Preservation Fund and its long-term authorization, which that's one of the funds that has been on the continuing resolution path as opposed to long-term authorization. And so that would be much better if we could have that on a long-term reauthorization. And Oklahoma City is one of the prime users in the state of Oklahoma for the historic preservation funding, and then for many projects. And then we also added back in to monitor any proposals that could affect remote sales tax collections. So if there aren't any questions on the federal agenda, maybe we take a break there.
Comments, questions on the proposed federal agenda? Okay, we could take a vote on it, I suppose. We'll go ahead and then a resolution for Item 4A, adopting this as the federal legislative program. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, 4B, the state legislative program.
All right, and so for our state agenda, I'd just kind of start off with talking about some of the key issues from 2024, just to highlight, you know, these issues get approved and go off, and of course, we have weekly reporting during the legislative session. But just to kind of recap what happened, the grocery sales tax exemption happened at the state level, but not the local level. So we were successful in keeping that just limited to the state sales tax only. And then also, there was follow-up legislation to clarify the definition of groceries and then delete some of the confusing language that was there. Senate Bill 7 was passed to address construction of recreational facilities on lake property. Senate Bill 1545 allowed municipal course of record to make their own closing schedule. And then Senate Bill 1862 corrected the mental health transport statute for self-reporting clients. And those will go into effect November 1st. So for the next legislative session, looking at our priority issues, these also do not change very much from year to year, and these are essentially carryover issues for this year. For new issues under initiative items, so the way these are defined is these are actual initiative items that the city will find an author to file bills to actually make these changes to the statute. So the first priority is to modify the construction management statute to allow cities to utilize additional services when they're doing a construction management or construction-at-risk type of project, which we're currently not allowed to do, but is done by several state agencies. And then the other new one, so the creating parking districts is a carryover issue from last year, and that would allow, would create, enabling legislation to create parking districts, which would be similar to a business improvement district, but just for parking. And then the third item is to clarify provisions of the Energy Discrimination Elimination Act. And this was put into place in 2022 and captured political subdivisions where we believe that it wasn't intended to capture political subdivisions, but just to apply to state agencies. So we're wanting to clarify that. The fourth item is to make a slight change to the executive sessions under Open Meetings Act to add sale, lease, or acquisition of real property. Right now, you can have executive sessions when you're purchasing property, but not, some of these other, the sale or lease are not included in that statute. And then the final item is to modify the nuisance statute to address the repeated use of real property for criminal activity. And then, moving on to our support items, we've been working for several years with the Housing Stability Coalition to address issues in the Landlord-Tenant Act and to try to address our relatively high eviction rates, and then also supporting a cap on damages when we have a nuisance ruling. Some new items that were added this year, one is to support efforts to address assault of a public employee in the course of their duties, and then also to consider a municipal citation for sale of alcohol to a minor in state, when state charges have been filed. And then the final one is to support efforts to limit tort claims exposure for PFOS contamination for public entities. There is another new one, and that is to, the top one here, to support the Construction Industries Board Regulations to increase the amount of time a professional license is valid. Currently, it's one year. We would like to look at extending that to three years. And then the other items are all carryover issues that we've had in prior years in terms of things that we support. Under issues to monitor, these are also, have been the same for the past several years and just include several things that we just keep track of and report on as bills are filed under these various areas. So I am happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question related to the discussion of the sale, lease, or acquisition of property in executive session. Can you talk about like where that specific piece came from, if it was a specific department or example maybe of?
Sure. So actually, it came from our airports department. So they found when they were having, there were some offers to purchase land from the airport authority, they weren't able to discuss that in executive session, and they would like the ability to do that.
And the law provides now that you can, for the purchase of property. And so they were thinking, you know, they felt like they really would have benefited from being able to get everyone together to be able to talk about that before. They would still have to take public action on it, so it's not trying to reduce that.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to go to the item of the priorities, number 12, that we were looking at for the initiative issues. Is it initiative issues or the ones we will continue to support? Just curious, as far as the language that's in this particular item, as to why we decided to say it is somewhat deceiving, because even if the commission were to sunset, the district would still exist, but no entity residing in the district could lawfully make changes to their property without approval from the commission, and also, however it is important because the city has been approached by interested parties that would like to address some of the issues that pertain to the neighborhoods in this area. Just curious, because in my opinion, this is one-sided as far as not being general about how we can support this particular initiative and advocacy effort, and instead of saying it's deceiving, how can we say we would like to support it? I think, you know, I get what the language says pertaining to this particular district, but the district exists. So there are ways, as a city entity, that we can support the efforts of how changes need to be made and advocated for in relation to the Capitol Medical Center Improvement and Zoning District. So I would like for us to restructure the language in that part of this particular support paragraph, only because, you know, it's not the neighborhood's fault.
Right.
That this exists, and I just feel like it's, I just don't like the way we were saying it's deceiving when there should be ways that we support it.
We can certainly amend that language.
Sure.
Because I think really you can take that part out that just says it's deceiving. Just say, if the commission were to sunset, the district would still exist. I understand what she's saying.
And I think, because that's what, yeah, I was referring to the sunset. So yeah, if, correct. Yeah, we'll fix that.
I think, you know, just to say that we will continue to support and advocate and understand what our neighbors would like for us to do within this district. I think that's mainly, in my opinion, what the support of my continuous advocacy for this piece of legislation would be. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the proposed state agenda? Hearing none, we could take a motion to adopt the resolution. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Thank you, Jane, for all your work.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, Item Fives. What did I say? Did I say eight to one? And I'm like a robot up here sometimes. I'm sorry. That must have been Mark's absence. Sorry. Eight, passes unanimously. I'm like Anchorman. I just read what's on the cue cards. Passes unanimously, sorry. All right, Item 5, City Manager Reports.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, we have Ryan Murray here with us to present the resident survey, the 2024 Resident Survey. It's conducted over the summer. ETC has been working with us and partnering with us since we started this. We'd gone up for RFP on the selection for this, to rebid this or repropose this multiple times during that history. They started with us in 2005, and really appreciate their partnership and their work. So we have a long history with this. They have significant amount of information also with other entities, with other organizations that are of similar size and even smaller. And so we'll get a good comparison, both of how we've been doing through the years, as well as a comparison back to looking at other communities, and especially other large communities. So Ryan, I appreciate your partnership and appreciate you being here with us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here today. It's actually the first time I've had the pleasure of presenting in person to the city council here. I've worked on your project for probably the last 15 years, assisting Chris Tatham, our owner and CEO, with it, and it's a pleasure to be here today. I'm going to do my best here to navigate our slideshow. And just for those of you who aren't familiar, if anybody isn't, ETC Institute's really the nation's leader in market research for government organizations. We've been around for about 40 years, and ever since our inception, it's really been about helping organizations make better decisions. And over the last 20 years, our focus has really turned to municipal governments. And so our primary focus, and my primary focus at the firm, is really to work with municipal governments across the country. It's important for me, as the consultant, to kind of give you an idea of why we do the surveys. I always like to give you the consultant's purpose or the perspective of where I sit. And so for this particular project, the purpose of this particular survey is really to objectively assess resident satisfaction with the delivery of core city services. And we've done that through the number of Likert scale questions where we're asking folks to rate their overall level of satisfaction with those items. We want to gather input from residents, really to help set priorities for leaders within the organization, and we do that through inherent design of the survey instrument, through our importance and satisfaction analysis. And then we want to track your performance against yourself and compared to national and regional averages, or really what we're doing here is comparatively sized communities, and we want to continue to do that over time. I think this is the 18th time we've conducted the survey. We've been doing it since about 2005, and so there's been a couple of years we've missed there, but we've done the survey a lot, and so there's a lot of historical data to look back on here. When we talk about methodology, same as in prior years, it was a random sample survey mailed to a random selection of households within the city with follow-ups made via mail, postcards, text messages, emails, and online social media follow-ups. The idea is to ensure that we're getting an accurate number, or over 100 completed surveys, or, excuse me, over 150 completed surveys in each of the city's eight wards. And so that gives us statistically valid comparisons across all of the wards that you all represent. When we talk about who responded, it's important to ensure that we have good demographic and geographic distribution of the responses. And as we can see here, we have good, or, excuse me, demographic distribution of the ages of those respondents, the gender identity of those respondents, the race ethnicity, which is a very important factor that we track against the census statistics for the community, the income, which in 20, the most recently available Census Bureau statistics is about 64,000. And then that geographic distribution comes from us geolocating the actual home address of each respondent on the survey to ensure that we have 150 surveys in each of the eight wards, and that we also have good geographic distribution from each of those wards. And so it's not And so it's not important enough just to get 150 from a really consolidated area in one of the wards. We want to do our best to ensure that we've distributed responses throughout the entire community fully. When we talk about what to know, some of the things that I definitely want you to take away from here is that more than two-thirds of the respondents believe that the city's continuing to head in the right direction. There's some additional stats over there to the left, and you know, 60% also believe that the overall quality of services is very satisfied or satisfactory or satisfactory. Most respondents believe that the city's a great place to live, and perceptions of the community continue to remain high. Now, nationally, ETC Institute has seen communities struggle, but in Oklahoma City, your results have remained consistent. Many areas changed, but none less than, or excuse me, none more than 5%. And so when we talk about statistical validity, the margin of error of the results is about 4%. We don't see any significant changings, either decreases or increases, to the positive or negative for these core areas. When we talk about consistency, 18 of those items changed by more than 3%, none of them changed by more than 5%. And so we've just had a really steady set of performance, when other communities have seen up and downs throughout their results. When we talk about opportunities for improvement, again, those are inherently baked into the design of the survey. We're actually trying to actively eke out some of those priorities from respondents' satisfaction responses, as well as their forced ranking emphasis responses. And what we found in this year is that homelessness, streets, and traffic flow and code enforcement are three top priorities for improvement. I do need to note that homelessness was not in our overall category of city services in prior surveys, and that's been something new that we've seen trending in many communities, but it is something that you've never seen as a high priority before, because it was never in that particular grouping of questions in the past. So when we look at our benchmarks, we'll see some of those comparisons on how you've rated against national averages, and then that gray bar, large community averages. As you can see, as a place to live, you're really setting the standard for that particular item. And out to the right there, you can see just how far and above you are on all of our overall ratings of the cities compared to our national and regional averages. When we talk about satisfaction with major services, 10 out of the 12 areas, or those core areas, received significantly higher ratings over the national averages as well. I like to highlight customer service received from city employees, just because it is so far and above beyond both of those averages. And it's also a really hard item to continually keep up at that high of a level. I know 60% may not be astounding, but when you look at the regional averages and the national average, you really begin to get a picture of how well your employees are serving residents within the city. And when we talk about overall perceptions, overall quality of services provided by the city is significantly above those averages as well. And so as you can see through comparatives, through those large community averages and US averages, you can tell your community is really setting the standard for the delivery of core services. And when we use our GIS mapping to ensure that we're accurately kind of comparing the results from each one of the eight wards, we're averaging the responses when, within each one of the eight wards there, based on those dots that we saw previously, and we're shading those results. And as you can see, the city's equitably providing services to everybody in the community. When we talk about historical results now trending from benchmarking or comparisons to how we've compared over time, overall ratings have stayed about the same. As you can see, most of our ratings are well within the areas that they were in the 2023 surveys. The city's public transportation system actually saw about a 3.3% increase, and we saw a couple of decreases, more than 3% in city water utilities and ambulance services, just slightly out of that significant category. And we talk about some of our additional largest increases to the survey results. I see enforcement of city codes and ordinances. You had your staff up here today. It's just great to see that you're recognizing that staff, and through the survey results, we saw a significant increase in their satisfaction with that particular area. And as we look at a couple of the largest decreases in satisfaction, they do tend to hover around some of our larger priorities, which is pavement markings, the enforcement of local traffic laws. Multi-purpose trails and golf courses are also on those areas as well, which means that they're actively being used, and we'll see that in one of my final slides. When I talk about opportunities, again, I can't state it enough, and this might be the fourth time, but we inherently bake this design into the survey instrument to ensure we can provide you with objective priorities to follow. As I mentioned previously, homelessness was moved to the major categories question in 2024, and it did become one of our higher priorities for improvement. The analysis is meant to eke out those items that are below average in satisfaction, and I've highlighted the four areas for improvement, and above average in importance, and all four of those items were the most four, or the most important items out of the forced ranking question. When we look at some of the mapping of those areas, we see that there's a higher concentration of dissatisfaction in some of our wards for the efforts to address homelessness. When we talk about condition of city streets, we see a more homogeneous picture of the entire community being in that dissatisfied column. And as we look at traffic flow and ease of getting around the city and enforcement with city codes and ordinances, we see a more neutral view across the city. Again, averaging the number of responses, at least 150 in each ward, we're averaging them, giving a point value for that average, and then shading the area based on that average rating. When we look at our important satisfaction analysis, it's meant to line up all of those items that were rated in that particular question and stack up those items towards the top that are likely to have the greatest impact on overall satisfaction moving forward. That's homelessness, condition of city streets, flow of traffic, and ease of getting around the city, followed by enforcement of city codes and ordinances, which saw an increase in overall satisfaction, but it's really important to about one in five respondents. And I've highlighted the city's public transportation system, which saw an increase in overall satisfaction, but if we continue, or if we don't continue to monitor that satisfaction and try to keep it high, we could potentially see that item becoming a high priority. And so this will look a little bit different in your reporting, but what I like to do is kind of give you that breakdown in color scales, so you can understand those top three items are really, those items are going to have a major impact in the perceptions of respondents. As we get into enforcement of codes and ordinances, we start to kind of fade away from that really strong level of importance and are hovering more now in the satisfaction category, and the public transportation system in the community continues to be important to many respondents. We talk about additional findings. This might be new information for you all this time. Chris does not typically do the infographics, but I wanted to provide a little bit of additional information, so please provide corrective feedback to Mr. City Manager if this is not preferred for future years. But I thought your bus services and transit ratings were really interesting. Satisfaction increased about 3.3%, which is, or 3.3 percentage points, which is almost a significant increase in overall satisfaction. And what we find is that the characteristics that kind of prompt or make our decision on whether or not we'd want to use bus services have remained really consistent over the last three surveys. We talk about those most important bus characteristics. We're really looking for more routes to more places, bus stops within walking distances of our homes, and frequency of bus service. And those are kind of the commonalities that we see in other communities as well. When we talk about your contact with Oklahoma City police officers, I wanted to make sure that you all understood about half of your respondents or about half the community indicated that they've had contact. It's a little bit less than the prior year, from about 48% to about 46%, but almost 90% of those who've had contact indicated they were treated fairly. When we talk about folks who actually had a response time for an officer, almost 90% of those folks gave a positive response when they asked about the quality of that response time. When we look at the overall quality of police services, about 67% of respondents are satisfied, and most respondents are satisfied with the quality of police services in their neighborhood specifically. So when you kind of group all those ratings together, it's a relatively positive picture of police officer interactions with residents across the community. And one of the last ones here is parks and recreation and leisure. It's one of the areas that we focus on frequently at ETC Institute. It's a very active community, as I mentioned previously. When we talk about usage, more than three-quarters of respondents have used a city park or participated in a program in the last year, but almost 90% of your residents indicated they've participated in some type of physical activities such as running, golfing, gardening, walking, cycling, or calisthenics within the past month. So they might not always be using our specific city parks or our programs, but folks are active and in the community. There are a few conditions or priorities for improvement within that particular section, similar to the major categories. It's really condition of landscaping in the city, medians and streets or right-of-ways, the maintenance of parks, and the availability of information about parks and recreation programs and services. And I would be remiss if I did not include more customer service data. Overall, about 41% of respondents indicated they'd contacted the city in the past year. Most respondents are very satisfied with the way that they were treated, how helpful staff were by phone and in person, how quickly they responded, and the accuracy of the information that was provided. And so again, a huge pat on the back for all of those forward-facing employees that do a really hard job at the city. Imagine being a city employee, getting a phone call about a state highway or county road. It can be a really difficult conversation for an upset resident, and your employees have really excelled there. Down at the bottom right-hand corner, you can see just how more satisfied residents here in Oklahoma City are in comparison to national large community averages with the overall customer service ratings. In summary, residents continue to give really high positive ratings. It's been a consistent theme in your results for many years now. The city continues to set the standard for many of those ratings in high areas. When we compare your results nationally, you perform extremely well, and when we compare you to other large communities, you perform even better in many key areas. Overall satisfaction is not changing significantly. We're seeing that across the country, where we're seeing the significant dips in valleys in some of our key results, specifically perceptions. And Oklahoma City has seemed to be immune to that over the last couple of surveys. Our top priorities are fairly the same from prior years, but again, the introduction of homelessness or the efforts to address homelessness in our overall categories of major services really impacted the analysis, and we have homelessness, condition of streets, traffic flow, code enforcement as our top four priorities for 2023, or excuse me, 2024 headed in at 2025. And with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions. If I can't get an answer to you today, I will get a written response back to staff as soon as I can.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Questions?
Go ahead. No, no, I was just going to acknowledge our city employees, but I want you to ask your questions first.
I'm glad I was going to do what he was going to do.
Okay. So thank you for the presentation. I just want to connect some dots, if I might. So would you mind actually going back? We went through those slides very, very quickly. Would you mind going back to the wards when it comes to homelessness?
Yep.
When you look at that, before I give comments, and I'm going to go in question mode here, what comes to mind? Like when you see this, because there's a distinction between where people are identifying homelessness as a concern versus where they're not. From your, you're looking at other cities, what, just when you look at this layout, what comes to mind to you?
My first thing is that it's a citywide problem, and the degree of severity is what's kind of giving orange shading to that top right corner and red shading to the other. And so just keeping in mind, very dissatisfied is red and just dissatisfied is orange. And so it is, or it does seem to be a problem maybe closer to the city center, given some of those ratings. But when we look at our overall dot map, we see that the responses are fairly distributed, you know, citywide pretty well, and I'm going in the complete wrong direction, I apologize. And so we can see where some of those responses actually physically come from pretty closely, and there's a high concentration towards the middle of the community, which can have an impact on the shading in some of those smaller wards that just aren't as large geography-wise. And so your wards should be fairly evenly distributed in terms of population, but in the condensed population that you have in some of those wards is likely impacting. But I would say it's a, it's not all the same, but it's very much the same opinion citywide for the most part.
And then before I have comments, another question. Were you all able to drill down specifically regarding the code enforcement, enforcement of city codes and ordinances? Like what are people saying about that? Are there specific ordinances with which they're experiencing a lack of enforcement? I mean, just what are they saying?
Yeah, there is a, there is a section on there. Ratings are relatively stagnant in that particular section, and what I think the major problem is, is that most folks are either on two sides of the coin. So you want somebody to be enforced upon, or you're being enforced upon. So if you call the city and you're like, hey, my neighbor's grass is too long, and codes comes out with a ruler, and they're like, oh, not quite, well, now you're dissatisfied for the lack of enforcement. But if it did meet the threshold, and now you're being forced or charged for a lawn mowing, now you're dissatisfied for the actual enforcement taking place. And as a city council member in a very small community in the state of Missouri, I hear this all the time, and I get emails about it all the time. You know, codes enforcement comes by, they drop a letter in the mail or on their doorstep, and they're very frustrated because they take great care of their home, but you had a trailer parked on the grass. And so there are enforcement issues. That's a really contentious item, and we see that's kind of that item throughout the community. In some of these areas, it's about neutral. And so it again, kind of gives that picture that folks are being enforced upon or frustrated because of one of those two aspects, the coin flipped in one way or the other.
And would you mind going back to, this is my final one, to the, where you had all the dots in terms of the responses?
Yeah. I know it's hard to see, but it's a approximate location of each home address.
So, okay, so now just a comment, and thank you for asking or for answering those questions. So I know each of our wards are different, so let me preface my comments with that first. Like I recognize that what I'm about to say for Ward Two is not necessarily, you know, each of our visions going forward for our respective parts of town, okay? So this is not a one-size-fits-all for Oklahoma City. But when I look at Ward Two, this area from 23rd to Britton to 235, to give or take MacArthur Grove, Penniel, depending on where you are in the West, when I look at the five issues here that, where we have opportunities, right? Homelessness, condition of city streets, flow of traffic, ease of getting around the city, enforcement of city codes, and public transit. When I look at this, and this is going to be my challenge to the city going into the bond, at least for Ward Two, and again, not being prescriptive for the rest of the city, but, and I've already said this internally, I'm just saying it now in public. In my mind, when we address the condition of city streets with resurfacing, simultaneously, we should be thinking about that resurfaced street in Ward Two as an economic corridor. In other words, when I look at 23rd Street between Pennsylvania and May Avenue, which the city of OKC resurfaced recently, which is good, it needed it, I think the missed opportunity there, but we can address this, is, okay, we've resurfaced this street, but how are people using this section of the street? Like what is the utility of this street for Cleveland neighborhood, Shepherd neighborhood, Las Vegas and Councilwoman Hammond Ward, Crestwood, which is right over there? Like what is the utility? What are people doing here? And let me give you an example. I have a guy, he's about 80 years old, who lives in Cleveland. I adore this man. He comes up to me at one of their neighborhood meetings and goes, James, I would love to be able to just walk from Cleveland around the corner onto 23rd Street. So ease and flow of getting around, in his mind, is not just ease and flow of getting around in a vehicle, but being able to, this is an 80-year-old man, being able to walk to where once Shepherd Mall was. He wants to be able to walk over there to buy a shirt. That was his literal, simple request. It was like, I would love to not have to get in my car, especially as my glaucoma, right, is making it more difficult to drive. And I looked that man dead in the eye and was like, I will do everything I can to work in the next bond to try and redevelop from Villa on 23rd to Pennsylvania. You have this wide swath, y'all know what I'm talking about, this wide swath of parking, empty parking spaces from where buildings do not affront the sidewalk. And other council members, I understand that your wards develop differently, but the way Ward Two was initially meant to develop back 100 years ago, heading into World War II, was buildings affronting sidewalks, so that when people left their neighborhoods, they walked to their basic needs to shop at the hardware store, which Ace Hardware is there at 23rd and Villa, or to the grocery store, Walmart Neighborhood Market is right there, right? Mazzio Pizza, you know, you see what I mean? Like it was the idea of walking to your basic needs, and here was this 80-year-old man remembering mom and pop days of how that worked, and was asking me, the young whippersnapper, ain't that young anymore, to do something like that again. I think when it comes to the bond, City Manager, at least in Ward Two, what I'm interested in is as we resurface streets in Ward Two, this has to be a conversation also with economic alliance. What are we doing to make sure these corridors become economic engines in terms of raising our sales tax possibilities? That man go buy you a shirt. That's more sales tax in our city coffers, right? And that also addresses flow and ease of getting around. Second, homelessness. If you were to, as some other communities have done, you've probably seen this as a, you said city councillor, other cities, I've set it up here before, are incentivizing developers to redevelop vast parking that is in front of shopping spaces and fill it in with offices at the ground level, with retail shopping at the ground level, and one or two stories of housing above it. Imagine if you filled in from 23rd Street back to where Shepherd Mall is with housing for seniors, right? I'm serious. That's where I'm at. That is what I will be advocating for the whole next year, is like, how do you take, or 63rd and May, where you have PetSmart and Chick-fil-A? What if you filled in that space there where there's just vast parking with housing, with walkable areas that had more retail opportunities? And then the people from Robert's Crest, who are actually worried, they are worried that what the city wants to do, and you need to know the City Manager, they're worried that what we want to do as an entity is to come into Robert's Crest and put commercial spaces inside Robert's Crest. I don't want that. What I want is for the people in Robert's Crest to be like that 80-year-old man who feels safe walking from his neighborhood around the corner to 63rd. feels safe walking from his neighborhood around the corner to 63rd to go shop, do recreation. And that's what Ward Two is asking for the majority of them. They are wanting arterials that are accessible from their neighborhoods. So, for me, when I look at all this, you address housing by building housing, or you address homelessness by building housing. You've got to incentivize the developers to do infill development and to rethink these vast parking lots and redeveloping to meet our housing needs. 63rd and May, I was there yesterday getting stuff for my cat, where Old Atkins Grocery Store was a man homeless sleeping in front of Atkins on the sidewalk. What if we had housing there for him, you know? So, I think when Ward Two is asking about the conditions of city streets, yes, we want them resurfaced, need them resurfaced, but what is the purpose of that street has to be the question going forward. What is the purpose of this street for our residents and for the city's needs, our sales tax needs? It's what we run on as sales tax. So, the better access people have to shopping, the better our coffers are filled, so that we can better address these sorts of needs. So, I just want us to be thinking about resurfacing in Ward Two as economic corridors. So, I went on at length about that because I think that's important, and then I'll just conclude with this one. I go back to where I started, enforcement of city codes. Residents in Ward Two, a lot of them don't trust that we can address these issues because of what you were saying, where, you know, they'll call code enforcement, and they're like, well, why, this person was parked on their yard, but you all, Action Center is closed after 5:00, so no one's responding when people are doing the thing, and then by the time you all get there, the person's gone, and now the resident feels like, we're calling them a liar, or something like that? And they're like, no, I'm just telling you, this person's parking on a lawn. And so, this goes back, city manager, to my request a few weeks ago during budget season. I think we really do have to think about some sort of consultant or something to help us study how we can improve code enforcement, because I think the better our response times, the better our just responses generally, even if we make them mad sometimes, I think the more trust they'll have, in addition to showing them, you know, when these sidewalks go into our neighborhoods, or Paseo gets rebuilt, or whatever, you see, you know, the parks, Lower Scissor Tail, they need to see government in action, right? They need to see their tax dollars being put to use. So, to me, this is all connected. We build housing, you think about those economic corridors, you make sure people can walk, bike, drive easily to their destinations, that's the transit system as well, and you make sure that we're responding to our people's needs through the Action Center. So, to me, that's a story you can actually tell. Those needs are actually all related. So, thank you for listening to that. That's what I want to work with you in the bond with. So, thank you for these results, I love data.
I have a few comments and maybe questions, but maybe more comments. First, on this map, Councilwoman Nyes had pointed out that this is actually an old ward map. So, there's parts, like, I can see, yeah, this is a pre-2020 census ward map, so that does make me worry that if, depending on how you broke things up in the actual full report by ward, if you're going off of these boundaries, it's a little outdated and might not be fully representative of our wards' responses as of today. So, just wanted to check, like, do you know if...
It's pretty close, but it's probably CBGs is what you're looking at, is census block groups. It's hard to map all of the wards there, and so, what most likely my mapping team does is shade and then merge census block groups. I've got another community in Kansas City in Jackson County, and we do their water survey, it's the same thing, my team just can't unshade areas. But what I'll do is, as soon as we get back, I'll talk with Chris, and we'll just redo the mapping. Fortunately, it's unlikely to have changed any results or analysis, and it's likely just that the mapping needs to be updated.
Well, okay, yeah, it's like, if somewhere, if based on what you put, like, Ward One responses were this, Ward Two, Ward Three, I just want to make sure that, like, the close to, like, potentially 30 or 40 dots that are sort of located on here are actually in, like, my responses. And if it's just the map, then that's...
No, yeah, great call, thank you so much for mentioning that.
Yeah, and then, and I think this kind of goes, I think, to a little bit of what Councilman Cooper was saying, and I think I've mentioned in the past, but particularly this year with the question about homelessness, when we were asked to review the questions, and like I said, my contention with the way the question is asked is not new, it's somewhat related to how, what I've said in past years, but, you know, when you ask people, are you satisfied with the cities, how the city is addressing homelessness? I first have the question, do they know how the city is addressing homelessness? And it's kind of the same thing with code enforcement, where people have different expectations, understandings of what code enforcement can or is supposed to do, the timeline, and what, so there's just so many other questions that I have when I look at these results, that it, in some ways, makes me not trust the results, because if someone says, yeah, I'm satisfied, well, first I want to know, okay, what do you think we're doing? Or if I'm dissatisfied, does that mean I don't think the city is doing enough to invest in housing, or does it mean I don't think the city, or I think the city should be putting people in jail, and they're not doing that? So, there's just so many different reactions to that, that I struggle to know exactly what to do with these results on a year-to-year basis, and that goes for a lot of the other, even again, the code enforcement question, I think, is a good example of, you know, do I think there, there's just so many different answers that people might give, that I just don't know what opportunities there are to either, like, because again, if you're going to survey someone, you know, framing, at least understanding what they're thinking about what the city is doing, I think would help me understand the results better. And I don't know how you do that except having different surveys per topic area, because it seems like you need to have a little bit more context to be able to really know what to do with the results beyond, okay, people are dissatisfied, but I don't know what they're dissatisfied about. And I feel like I can get a, like, a temperature of that from being out, you know, knocking doors, talking to people within the ward, but I just, I just don't know if I really understand or know what to do with the result of this survey on a year-to-year basis, and I don't know, like, in my mind, it's kind of like, why are we spending money on something that I kind of just dismiss every year? Because I, the results aren't that meaningful, in my mind, and I would be curious if there are other opportunities to sort of rework how we do the survey, to get more substantive results, especially based on, like, if it's a particular area that the city is, because even, and I think I brought this up my first year on council with, like, city streets, and like, the dissatisfaction with city streets. Well, someone could be talking about an interstate, or thinking about an interstate when they're filling that out, not knowing that the city has no, so even, like, being able to even understand what people think about our streets and the quality condition of our streets, like, people don't, I don't know what, where they're thinking about. I know, I see there's a lot more, or it seems like, maybe I'm just dialing into it a little bit more, but it seems like there are a lot more, just like, free-flowing, you know, like, stream-of-thought comments than past years, so maybe that's a helpful place that we can drill down on. But again, it's, I just wonder what opportunities we have to get better understanding of what people are actually responding to, beyond just like a Likert scale or yes-no question that, in my mind, doesn't really provide a lot of insight into what residents actually are wanting the city to do about things, if that makes sense.
And then, I'll just echo, as far as even this map here that I'm looking at, I have questionable concerns as well, just because of how, how much the ward has shifted in relation to what I'm seeing. But to echo just some of those questions, I was reading through a couple pieces as you were presenting, so I apologize, I couldn't listen and read at the same time. But as I was looking at those questions and looking at the variety and diversity of the age groups of the respondents, and the levels of income, as well as, you know, just the optics of who we were working with as far as these surveys are concerned, the question, I saw one of the questions that talked about stormwater, and your average person is probably going to say, what is that? If they don't already know and are integrated in the things that we're talking about day to day. So, some of those questions, in my, in my opinion, it is a question of, again, how are they supposed to respond with the lack of maybe us explaining what that looks like for them to respond to? And also, as we look at that code enforcement, I was looking at the ward, my ward specifically, and there were some concerns for code enforcement, but at the same time, I have a lot of rural area, which a lot of us do, and the code enforcement looks totally different in our rural areas in comparison to our urban, urban core. Therefore, a lot of our residents think it's junk and debris, when in fact, your zoning allows for you to have some of that junk and debris. But they want code enforcement to do something about it, so therefore, they're saying the code enforcement's not responding. So, those are the things that, even for myself, it, I'm not sure if even this survey responds to if you live in a rural, the rural part of the ward, of your ward, or do you stay in more of the urban core of your ward? I think that would be a good way to also analyze how we look at the respondents in relation to how they respond, and how these questions, as far as the responses in the back, because that's what, I always go straight to the back. And I would encourage our council, other council members to do that, too, to go straight to the back, to see what our community is saying as far as those open-ended comments. And there could have actually been a couple of other ways to address even some of those open-ended questions, because I look at the lighting, all of the things that we're working towards in our city, and I know for me and my ward, there was a concern about lighting, but there wasn't a way for them to address maybe some areas that could be pointed out for us as a city to look at as far as their community is concerned of where lighting should be a priority. So, some of those maintenance things I was looking at, but this is very telling as far as some of those open-ended comments of how our residents feel and what they feel their needs and priorities are. So, I am also hoping that we will do follow-up with the ways that even these respondents have, have said, how they feel pertaining to either homelessness, our public safety, and/or just feeling safe within our city limits are concerned. But I do appreciate you with the presentation, and I do hope that we're able to look at, again, a little deeper dive in some of those questions that are more general, because there, there has to be a way to buckle down how we can look at those broader questions more intimately in order for us to really look at how we are serving our residents in the way that we ask them to respond. So, again, I appreciate that, and then I think that's more of the call to the city, more so than anyone, of helping us to understand how we can use this as a better guide, instead of saying, we've done it and we're satisfied, if that makes sense. So, thank you.
And then, just one more thing, city manager. I'm just looking, I, thank you, I went to the comments. And I would encourage you all to go see what your fellow neighbors are saying, but I do have some ask, if you wouldn't mind. I'd like to know what I missed earlier in terms of that 80-year-old being able to walk around the corner to go shopping for a shirt, lighting, and I know Maps4 is funding streetlights. I would, I've already requested this, I think internally, but I'd like to say it in public. I'm waiting for, with Maps4's streetlights project, I think we're doing like a light map of where darkness is in the city and prioritizing those streetlights going there. So, like, for instance, 23rd, where Councilman Hinkle and I were at C2, from 23rd to Expressway, we're putting in new sidewalks, but a lot of the residents tell me, like, when they see someone experiencing homelessness, they're like, well, shouldn't we have streetlights also, both for them and for us, you know? And the other thing, too, is I think of that 80-year-old, let's say we do refurbish 23rd Street in those ways, but if he's walking in the hot July and August sun without shade and trees, that affects his ease of getting to where he needs to be. So, it really is sidewalk, in Ward Two, sidewalks, crosswalks, streetlights, trees, connecting people to their basic needs, like the hardware store, the grocery store, and literally, when I'm looking at these comments, some of these folk are calling out specifically the places I am talking about. So, I'd like to know more where the streetlight projects are heading, update on the heat island map that we did when volunteers went out and measured the heat coming down. I would also, like, I know it's 1.5 billion to 2 billion in street resurfacing needs the city has. I don't know the amount remaining for sidewalks, and I'd like to know what that amount is, citywide. Like, how much would it cost to get some sidewalks in Hinkle's Ward, for instance? You know, I need to, we need to know that big number, so we can start really thinking about those sorts of things. So, yeah, just an update on where we are with the trees in Maps4, thinking about where they're going to go, the streetlights, our sidewalk needs, update, yeah, those are, I think, some important things to kind of hear as well. And then, I do think, to Councilwoman Hammond's point, it might be worth, sir, next year, asking people, I hear it all the time, I know that we're not responsible for the interstates, but it might be worth digging in and just kind of being like, hey, what do you think about interstate conditions, comma, the purview of the state government, you know? What do you think of city streets? And it might also be worth asking, what do you think about your neighborhood streets? Like, because the city, when we do bonds, I'm realizing, it's my first bond go-around, we make that distinction between arterial streets, 23rd, May, Penn, Agnew, and neighborhood streets in Cleveland, in Las Vegas. Residents, we need to let them know that that's how we're doing this, and asking them, maybe that would be some clarification for you all as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say real quickly, thank you for the survey. I love the, I love seeing this every year, and when the stuff's positive, that's great, and when we see the negatives, it's a little stressful. I get that. But I can tell you, based on my interactions with a lot of my constituents, what you highlighted there is the areas need improving, definitely need improving. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again, Ryan, really appreciate the partnership with ETC and the way you continue to work with us to try to look at different ways that we can survey, but I do want to acknowledge again, you know, what you pointed out about the city services and how we compare to national averages, and that there's areas we need to improve, there's no doubt about it, but it really is a reflection of the leadership of the council, but the work of our city employees out there getting this work done every day, and I just feel like we've got to acknowledge the work that they're doing and express our appreciation to them.
Well, and Craig, I just want to say this, and this is to both you and Todd's point, when I was knocking doors, people would often name these items, but you know what they would say a whole lot, and I bet the other council members might say this, too? Often, when I would ask what your concerns for your neighborhood are, or hopes for our city, they'd say, just keep going, keep moving in the direction you're heading. They didn't name an issue, they said, keep going. And that was a very common response, so, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you. Kind of still on you, Mr. City Manager.
That is all that we have on City Manager Reports, other than Claims and Payroll. We will be posting, we're going to go back and look at that mapping, we'll double-check that and make sure that we get that updated for this. We will be posting this on OKC.gov. We'll also have, our Claims and Payroll is on here, it'll be on OKC, OKC.gov as well. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Okay, we're at Item Six, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have Items A and B, we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item Seven, a request for uncontested continuances. Item 11A is already on the agenda to be deferred till November 5th, and I want to, I don't know if Randy Taylor and Dal Campbell are still in the audience, but if they are, just wanted to flag that for them, that item will be moving to November 5th. Is there anything else, Mr. City Manager?
We have several items that are on, on code enforcement, on the unsecured structures and abandoned, on Item 11K1, Page 12. Item F, all these items will be stricken from the agenda. 1612 North Virginia Avenue, owner has secured. Item G, 904 Northwest 23rd Street, the owner has secured. Item I, 813 Northeast 35th Street, the owner has secured. And Item J, 3081 Southwest 37th Street, is owner occupied. Continuing on Page 12, Item 11- Continuing on page 12, Item 11L1, abandoned housing, abandoned buildings. All of these items will be stricken for the same reasons they were stricken, under unsecured structures. Item E, 1612 North Virginia Avenue. Item, not, Item F, 904 Northwest 33rd, 23rd, 23rd, 23rd Street. And Item I, 813 Northeast 35th Street. That's all that I have.
Okay. Item 8, a revocable permits and events. And we have Item 8A, which is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership to hold the Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival on November 12th. Mickey Mantle, between Flaming Lips and Wanda Jackson. And we have Olivia Branscombe here.
Hello, Council, thank you for having me today. We will be having our 23rd Annual Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival coming up on November 12th. I encourage everybody to come out. We'll have free entertainment, arts and cultural performances. And Mr. Mayor will be lighting the Christmas tree. And then we'll have free food from Bricktown businesses. It's gonna be a great event, and I encourage everybody to come see us. And we are requesting the closure of Mickey Mantle Drive.
Okay, Councilwoman Nance?
Yes, what time?
5:30 to 8:00 P.M.
5:30 to 8:00, thank you. I will say, it's going to be a different tree lighting this year without Santa Blair. So I did want to mention that. And hopefully, we will have, not to say you can never replace Santa Blair, but ways that we can still celebrate all of our cultures pertaining to this, this tree lighting festival. So I know there will be other opportunities to do that and look forward to us being able to celebrate. I don't know about you, but it seems like it, it moves up every year, as far as the date is concerned?
We will be aiming for two Thursdays before Thanksgiving from now on. This year, it will be on Tuesday, so.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I guess it makes sense, since Christmas stuff comes out in July now.
It does, and we've got to be the first to light the tree, so.
I agree.
Taking the season off.
I agree. So with that, I'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
8B is a joint revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and United FP Holdings to hold the Harvest Hero 5K Planet Fitness Race at Lake Stanley Draper on October 26th. And we have Morgan Danker here.
Hi, I'm Morgan Danker with OKC Parks. Our event organizer for this event is actually located in Missouri. So they were unable to join us today. They've done several events with us, with the Body Race Company. And this time, they're partnering with Planet Fitness for this event. They're gonna be out at Lake Stanley Draper, near the marina. And then they'll use the Lake Stanley Draper Trails. They'll be celebrating our local heroes and supporting a vital cause. A portion of the proceeds will go to the Warriors Rest Foundation. It's an organization dedicated to helping first responders heal from frontline traumas. There will be a 5K, as well as a Kids Dash course. There's also a Halloween-themed costume contest, a raffle prizes. The mascot of the Oklahoma City Baseball Club will be there for a warm-up run. And a Touch a Truck event will happen after the race, where kids can come out and get up close with police cars and fire trucks, meet the amazing people who drive them, and learn a little bit about their important work for the community. Do you guys have any questions about the event?
No, Councilwoman Stone?
Thanks, Morgan. Excited to see this event being held out at Draper, which is the prettiest in the city. Do you know what time that pre-race warm-up race?
The pre-race, so the race it starts, itself starts at 8:00 a.m. I believe the pre-race is 7:30 a.m.
How long is that pre-race?
It's just a short, little warm-up jog.
Hundred yards or so? I got it, all right. Hey, thank you very much, I'm excited for it, and I will move for its approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we'll recess the council and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A through D, we could take with one motion.
Sure. Before we vote on this item, can we get an update on Item A?
This is the new fire station on South Sooner Road.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Debbie Miller of the Public Works Department. This item is to award the contract for the consultant to start the design on this station on South Sooner Road. This is a replacement station for Station 13. That's currently at Southwest 74th in Air Depot. And we, we expect to have the preliminary, preliminary report in the spring. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Yeah, when's construction gonna be complete?
Construction? Well, if we have the preliminary report in March, it will probably be the following spring, spring of 2025.
Great, glad to see some progress being made on this thing. Thank you.
Okay, we can bring back up the potential motion on Items A through D then. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, we'll adjourn OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have Items A through F, and we have a presentation on Item A.
Yes, David Todd, our MAPS Program Director, is going to give us a presentation on the A and E services for the new arena.
Good morning, as the City Manager said, I'm David Todd, Program Manager in the MAPS Office. Really excited and happy to be bringing you this, this contract today so we can get started on this, this project. This is for the architecture of the new arena. I've watched this a thousand times, and I have to learn it. So I wanted you to know that, that we went through the usual process that we go through to select architects and engineers, and it's a public works process. We, we stayed true to that. There were six firms that submitted interest in the project. Four were shortlisted and then interviewed. After those interviews, TVS was selected, and we negotiated a contract. I do want to give credit to two people for some extreme work they did in getting this turned around in, in a short manner, in a very complicated contract. And it's Todd Woodward from the MAPS Office and Craig Keith of Municipal Counselor's Office, did a fantastic job. The contract was negotiated, and you have that before you. It also went through the development agreement process. So it received approval from the Development Committee. And so what you have here is a contract with TVS. Manica has been in the news, but they are part of this contract. So there's two firms that have come together to do this. And, and I'll, I'll show you in a minute that that's, that's pretty common. There's more than 30 firms as sub-consultants. Typical consultants, typical disciplines that you see on a project like this. For instance, like the diversion hub that we just broke ground on. You'll have a civil engineer and structural, and MEP is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, food service, signage, technology, those kinds of things that we're used to seeing. But on top of that, because of the, the uniqueness of this project, we have specialty disciplines. It includes parking and energy modeling, timed egress modeling. And that's to make sure that when, when a game or a concert is over, that people can get out in a certain amount of time. Specialty lighting, smoke control modeling for the concourse in case there's a, an emergency. Wind and snow and microclimate, hostile vehicle mitigation. There's many more, but those are some of the specialty disciplines that are included in this. So as I said, over 30 firms are included with this contract. And along with those 30 firms, we have some local associates here, architects. Reese Associates is associated with the architecture. We have Wallace Engineering, Kimley Horn, KFC Engineering. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing still needs to be determined, but there will be a local representative in that and surveying also. So as I said, there is local representation in this design. So I, I mentioned that it's TVS and Manica, two different firms. Draw your attention to the top graphic here. So this is typical of a project, much like we had, if you recall, on the Convention Center, that they had staff on, in their office, that they consider the creative staff. And they do the design, and they, they dream all the, the dreams. And then the other staff takes over the technical aspects of it, doing the drawings, coordinating structural with mechanical and electrical, those kind of things. So then go to the next graphic below. That's very similar to what you're gonna see with this partnership, if you will, with TVS and Manica. Manica will be highly engaged at the beginning to come up with the design of the project. And, and you can see as TVS starts to get involved, they take over with the drawings, and then eventually, the construction aspect of the project. So that's how the two firms will work together. This is a common practice with Manica and, and even with TVS. You can see on the right that, that Manica has done this with many different firms. TVS and Manica have actually done it together with the Nissan Stadium in Tennessee. And TVS has done it with some other firms. So this is not a new concept, and they're used to working in this manner. TVS is a firm that has global experience. You can see that they've, they've had, I forgot the number. But anyway, worked all over the world, in, in various countries. And you can see some of the, the projects on the left. Likewise, Manica has over 60 projects in 16 countries. And I'll show you some of those in a minute. This is a, a timeline. I know it's hard to take in all of this and see all of this. But what it shows is that Mr. Manica has started in 1994 with another firm, started his design work. You can see that the different projects that they've had over time. A lot of projects, the projects are Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Nagoya, Japan. There's one in Russia, there's Osaka, there's China. Big projects all over the world. And then most recently, as far as NBA arenas, Mercedes-Benz Arena, well, NBA China compliant, Ganzu Arena. Little Caesars Arena in Detroit, Michigan, Climate Pledge Arena. And then, most recently, Chase Center in San Francisco. One of the things that intrigued me a lot was their ability to use this specialized software that they have that will help increase the, or decrease the time of design. Just to give you a quick example, they have specialized software that they can put in the width of the seats, and how many seats they want in a row. And, and the software changes the entire drawing. You're not waiting a week for everybody to redraw it and see how it looks. It literally changes it on the fly. We think that's gonna be very valuable during this process. And then it also gives you all the counts of the, of different levels of seats as they go along, so you can keep track of where you are. As I said, I'll show you some of the examples, San Francisco, California, Chase Center. You may be familiar with that. Las Vegas, Nevada, while it's not arena, it's certainly an iconic structure. And that's the Allegiant Stadium there, that's been serviced, I think, about three years. Nashville, Tennessee. The Nissan Stadium, I believe this one is under construction right now. That's why there's renderings and not actual photos. Well, I missed one. And then you go to Chicago, and the new arena for the Chicago Bears. Osaka, Japan, design of an arena there. Beautiful exteriors also. Seoul, South Korea. You can see that they're very iconic and, and really something to, to see. I couldn't help but put this in here, the engineer in me loved this part. A digital model of the project, where you can literally walk through the building and see all the spaces and how, how they interact with each other, and how you will interact with the building, and make sure all the systems don't clash. So as far as the design process moving forward from here, there'll be interviews with user groups, interviews with stakeholders, interviews with public officials. As I mentioned, digital models, we'll, we'll be using virtual reality to walk through this facility, and then maybe even some physical mock-ups. The, the architect will also help us through the project delivery, and then through construction, full-time inspection. And they'll provide constant review of the process. That's all I have. Really happy to be bringing this to you today. As I said, I try to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thanks, David, appreciate your work and leadership on the team, all the work they've done, working with TVS, Manica, to get us to this point and get us ready for the design.
Just one question, as far as looking at the contracting process and even our subcontractors. Just curious to know our commitment to the diversity of using minority contractors in this process? If that has begun, as far as those conversations? What is in the language for our commitment to do that? And how will we start that process to ensure that only, not only a few people will be able to take advantage of being able to design this arena, but also our community and our city truly being a part of this effort?
As far as the design, I don't, I don't have any real numbers. I know that we strive to, to have the local participation. And, and we're always cognizant of the diversity that we have. I know there's a lot of women on these teams, I do know that. I don't know all of the, the team players at this point. But, but it is constantly on our mind.
Okay, with that being said, I, I would like for us to look at auditing our contracting process for our minority contractors in these processes. And, and I say that specifically because we have all of these projects that are happening and taking place. And as a city, we could be committed to ensuring these things take place. And I know that this is something that I have been asking for since I've been elected, of how we can be very intentional about what that looks like. So I would like for us to look at what those numbers say as far as our contracting process is concerned, especially with these types of designs. Because I know there's a diversity of people, organizations, companies, and ideas and thoughts that could be brought to the table when it comes to looking at how these things are built and/or ensuring the diversity of thought when it comes to these particular conversations. And also, how we're looking at ADA in the process of this, and, and ensuring that we have that type of consultant. And I think this is the perfect time for us to utilize the ADA committee or task force that we have in place, appointed by the city or, or the mayor, that we have that would be able to, to assist us in the ways that we look at how we take care of our residents and our neighbors in this process as well. So those are, those are a couple of, of things I would like for us to, to do and work on, and ensuring that our bidding process is one that is audited. And how we work on bringing in more diversity in minority contractors, and also those subcontractors that could be a part of, of how we rebuild and continue to build the city of Oklahoma City.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things I would just comment, and you can comment about the ADA. Accessibility definitely in the designs will be a critical part of this, and definitely be engaged in that. On the minority contractors, we're working all the time to make sure we're communicating with, with contractors, to make sure people know what's available. We don't set a quota or set a specific, specific target. But what we do is make, try to make sure that it's accessible to them, and we make sure the information's available. We're working on our minority contractor program and continuing to develop and grow that, to be able to reach out and help people understand how they can participate and be a part of our process. So it's definitely a priority for us. We can take a look and see what information we have on the numbers, or on the actual numbers from the contracts that we're bidding right now, to get some information on that.
And I, I'm glad. And I'm glad you brought that up because now I can reemphasize, this was supposed to happen anyway because of, with Maps4, of us being able to have that commitment and that that was language that we had, ensuring that these things would take place. So I'm now more curious to know where we are with that because we do have projects that have already begun in Maps4 and I'm concerned because I still hear from a lot of our contractors that they are not able to be at the table.
We're glad to provide updates on where we are with that.
Thanks for the presentation, Director Todd. This might, well, question. When, remind me again, please, when construction, I know we're at the design moment, when do we anticipate construction starting on this project?
As soon as I can. No, I think that it'll probably be right around the first of 26.
Like January 26th, winter, winter 26?
Estimate right now, yeah. If we can get it going before then, that would be ideal.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then this goes back to a conversation Councilman Stone and I had a year ago heading into the conversation about the arena. You might recall the Community Benefits Agreement from Milwaukee that we used as a model was more about the arena jobs themselves and less about the construction jobs, but both Todd and I are interested in construction jobs and connecting our residents to those jobs. And moreover, what apprenticeship opportunities might exist for young people, right, in high school, early twenties, to work under some of these contractors and subcontractors? And it looks like time's a little, well, it looks like we have a little bit of time here because this is 2024 concluding. So we have about a year and some change, I would imagine, to be intentional about what outreach to our local people is in connecting them to these construction jobs at the arena building this and simultaneously to apprenticeship jobs. So that's something I want to, I'd like to know what our very intentional plan is for that. And then a couple items related to that is, I know this is old hat, but my memory is OK C P S with their bond election last year, you might recall, is having these what they call flex spaces on their campuses, these places, almost like career techs. And each of the high schools where they're going to build these workforce development spaces, each campus kind of has its own focus. So I want to say it's Capitol Hill. There was this idea that there would be an intentionality, a focus there on construction. I think it's really worth our time as soon as possible, even though we have that year and some change, to have conversations with OK C P S, Oklahoma City Public Schools, about the anticipation, anticipated construction for that site, make sure it is Capitol Hill, but wherever it is. And then how can we be partnering with them so that their students, our students, are able maybe in an apprenticeship way, right, or however it is, to connect to arena jobs, construction jobs? And my idea was always that if you get our students those skills to work on the arena, whether as apprentice, what have you, or even our young adults, once they have those skills and those certifications, right, they could then move on to other projects, like horizontally across our city, maybe even start their own construction business, right? So I always saw this as an opportunity to really help solidify the skill set of our people. So that's the first request is OK C P S. The next request, excuse me, request here is to Councilwoman Nice's point. I would hope and I'm going to ask that this become a partnership with, and I might miss one, so please forgive me, I'm not, no slight, but our South O K C Chamber of Commerce, I feel like we should be bringing them to the table and asking them about, hey, how can you better connect people in your community to construction jobs here from South O K C, Northwest O K C Chamber, Black Chamber, the Asian Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber? And if I miss one, please forgive me, but 621 square miles, I think rather than like a top-down approach, I think it's worth going into the different parts of our city and going to these chambers of commerce and being like, you all believe in business and connecting people to jobs and supporting businesses. This is an opportunity where we can be intentional about outreach within respective communities to have a partnership about our people, our people, building this arena, our people, right? And I think that will pay dividends 50 years from now in the way that when I walk Good Home Park in Jefferson Park neighborhood and I look in the sidewalk and I see a Works Project Administration stamp in that concrete, I know that through the federal government, our people built Good Home Park and I want the arena to bear similar markings. So I just think, but we got to be intentional about this. It's what Nikki is saying, Councilwoman Nice is saying, if you're not, if we're not intentional about this sort of outreach. And by the way, if I remember during that arena election, some elected officials went to these chambers to get their support. And so I think now the work continues. We got to go back. They have to hear from us again. They can't just hear from us at election time. So, and I'm, how's that sound? Am I off base here, sir?
So, I mean, I would just say there are going to be so many workers on this, there are going to be significant opportunities for local trades workers. So there's going to be significant opportunities here. Also, one of the things that we want to be intentional about, and we've talked with some of the groups that are looking at the potential for bidding on the project, is that opportunity for apprenticeships. The industry really wants to encourage apprenticeships so they grow their trades. That's important to them as well. So all of that together, I think, is going to be critically important and as many local workers as we can get on the job we want to. We've got to get enough workers on the job as a whole, but as many local workers as we can, we'll want them there.
I'm glad to hear it. You heard me say how much I love data earlier. My request here is I would like data along this process. I'd like a timeline of when we reach out to the respective chambers I have just listed. Feel free, council members, if there are other chambers I might have missed or business community opportunities that I have missed, but I'd like a timeline so that years from now, we can go back out to these respective entities and say, we did reach out to you. Here's when we reached out. I think that's important. We got to show our homework. I think the second thing here is I'd like to know in totality how many workers ultimately it will take, and I'd love an inventory. By the way, this is not like in a critical way. I just, I'm excited about this. I'd like an inventory of the type of construction jobs, the total number, and how, like how we're filling those, and then ultimately the total numbers of apprenticeships that happen. And I'd like to be learning that as this next year and some change happen. But I just think it's important for us to show our work here. There are a lot of people who are excited about this project. There are some people who absolutely hate this project and I think we have to deliver back to them, right? The timeline, the receipts of how we did it. I mean, it's kind of the Councilwoman Nice's point about, you know, auditing. We have to be very intentional. If we can go out to them during an election and ask them for their support, these different respective chambers, now we have to show them that we are serious about connecting them, not just to these jobs, but ongoingly. So that is a huge request I am making in public from OK C P S to the different chambers of commerce. Thank you.
David, you and I have spoken about this at length. One of my concerns about what's going on here, and I don't disagree with anything anybody said, but if you look in the skyline of Oklahoma City right now, our national bird is the crane because there's construction going on everywhere. You can't turn a corner without a giant project being built and with the city adhering to the lowest best bid on most of our projects and all the construction workers are working for private contractors and we've signed an agreement with the N B A to have this completed by a certain time, I'm more concerned about us having the workforce to get this done as I am about who we hire because of the enormous amount of construction going on right now. I mean, Todd's Ward with the 577 and the Oak and everything going on on Lincoln Boulevard, I can go on and on, but that is something that concerns me and, I mean, that is just for comment. I don't necessarily need an answer. It's just, kind of is what it is.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. And I think it's going to only grow because especially if you think of even just our projects, the multipurpose stadium is going to be going about the same time. So there's going to be a significant demand on the local workforce. I have no doubt with the number of projects that we have, we are going to have to have workers from outside of our community coming in, but we're going to do everything we can to maximize the local workforce.
Well, the municipal contractors are shorthanded. The, I mean, the people who build our roads, the people who build our buildings, if you can draw a sober breath and show up for work, you're hired. Basically, any construction project in Oklahoma City, and it's really not that easy, but we do have a, I agree, we're going to have to have out-of-state people come in to help us finish this construction project because that is, it is now, we don't have the workforce to keep up with the private sector as well as the city projects that are going on.
Any other comments or questions from council on this item? Okay, we have a resident who's signed up to speak, Steve Hunt.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Steve Hunt, most of what I wanted to say and ask about was addressed in this, so I just wanted to say a couple of things. Funny thing happened this morning when the arts people came up. Meg Salier looked and said something nasty to me and I thought it was funny. Meg Salier is one of the architects of the Penn Square Bank crash that destroyed Oklahoma City and it was interesting to me to see her up here and how it connects to this about so many bad actors who were involved in the city like her. Philip Zweig actually commented on my Facebook because I posted a picture of it. He was the author of Belly Up. He said, ah, yes, Meg Sipperly, who helped bring Chase Manhattan to its knees. And the reason I mention that is we are replicating the patterns of the Penn Square Bank days. The same people behind the deadliest jail in America, I spoke about my group, People's Council for Justice Reform, pushing turnkey, yeah, look at the clock, Dave. People's Council for Justice Reform pushed turnkey out and they were a big part of that whole ecosystem. Clay Bennett formed C JAC in 2019 and he's the one behind all of this and there's a lot to talk about it. A lot of outsiders making money. The broadcast of the Thunder was by Bali. Now it's going to be by Fandel Sports. That's just a rebranding of subsidiaries of Sinclair Broadcasting in Maryland. Bali has $8 billion in debt, so all they had to do was rebrand and they get to keep the contract. It should have been local. I was up here screaming about how important it was to give Russell Perry the radio rights and a local TV company the broadcast rights and money is flowing out of the city through this. When I worked at Jet Set FBO, the brass of the Thunder would fly out using a Chicago charter company and Happy Wells, the owner, was like, Steve, next time Sam Presti's here, I want you to gripe him out about that. And it was, it was fun to do that, you know, because he's afraid of flying and like, I was like, hey dude, you need to use local. And Rep Nice, you addressed the minority situation. I can guarantee you the minority is going to make a lot of money. Unfortunately, it's the 1%, not the right minorities. I'm very troubled about this. People can go to Thunder Arena Swindle Part Two on YouTube and learn about it. Thank you for your time.
City manager, maybe mayor, can, maybe I'm just missing something here, but this item says Oklahoma City Arena One Myriad Gardens? What is that language, the Myriad Gardens here?
That's the address.
Just making sure, okay. One Myriad Gardens, okay.
And maybe that's negotiable. I don't know, we've never talked about it. That's the current address. That's been the address since 1972. So maybe a discussion for another day. All right, we are now to the item. Well, actually, we typically do P P A together.
I'd like to vote separately on this item.
Okay. We will then take a motion on item A. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes five to two. And now we have the remainder of the P P A agenda items B through F we could take with For the motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll adjourn O C P P A and reconvene as the council. We're on item nine, the consent docket. There are no scheduled presentations today. Is there anything a council member needs to pull out for separate comment, question, vote?
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion that we defer items A S and A T for two weeks.
Okay, you said A S as in Sam?
Yes.
And what was the other one?
A T.
Let me just make a note of that right now and then we'll, because you're going to want to defer those two weeks. Okay. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to, for the public rather, to hear a little bit more about item A, P as in Paul. And then, are we going to hear the staff planning to do a presentation on the homelessness management information system?
There's no scheduled presentations, I'm answering.
None.
Which item is that?
Item A C, and I feel like it shows back up.
You want to hear about it?
I do.
Okay.
I appreciated one of the, one of our city employees reaching out on this item and it might, it just kind of struck me that we might need to hear about it a little bit as a council, so thank you.
I'd like to request a separate vote on item B, G.
Is that B as in G as in, yeah, okay.
And I would like to have more information, I'm reading it, but just for public record, A H, please.
A H, okay. Okay, why don't we just take them in order and we'll actually start with a resident who had signed up to speak on the very first, oh no, maybe not the very first item. It'll be the first one. Randy Taylor for item A B. Not here, or?
No, he's back there.
Is it, Mr. Taylor?
My name's Randy Taylor. I live at 7801 South Anderson Road. I also own property at 6212 South Hawkins Drive in Oklahoma City. This is downhill or downstream from the housing addition. I was the one who initiated the petition in 2008 against Asheville. As Mr. Stone mentioned in the last meeting that covered P U D 2006, the number of water wells versus the number of city systems is getting too thick. I did actually have my petition, I'm sorry, I wasn't quite ready to speak on this. In 2008, I spoke to a gentleman named Mr. Fabian, I'm sorry, I don't have his position, I imagine it was Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and he mentioned in 2006, there was a drought and there were a number of wells that had to be re-drilled because the average depth of the wells that were drilled out there previously were between 140 and 180 feet. Mr. Harrington made the recommendation that all the wells in this addition, which was approved, much to my chagrin, be drilled to depth of 200 feet to ensure water. Well, that's great for those people who moved in that addition, but not so good for all the people who lived out there and made that community what it was. When you get to fire protection, fire protection, we have great firemen out there, love the firemen. They have no source for water. There is no water line east of Douglas Boulevard. Having sprinkler system in houses like they put in Asheville is wonderful until electricity goes out. And there are a couple of additions in that area that were required to put water tanks outside, which is great. Some of you, Mr. Stone, may remember, years ago, we had a fire, had a lot of wind and the fire was jumping miles because the embers were running miles. You're putting more houses out there, the infrastructure's not there, the drainage is not there. Asheville caused significant additional flooding. We admitted there was flooding in the valley that I live in, but whenever you threw in three additions, the largest of which was Asheville, 240 acres, it dramatically increased the flooding across my property, my parents' property, and I had a neighbor who could not get out multiple times. I've lived, I've lived in that area from the time I was six until about 12 years ago when I moved over on Anderson Road, so I'm extremely familiar with the flooding on that. on that.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Pardon?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay. City water and sewer will not be available in any, anytime in the near future, so if we have well problems, you also have the distance, spacing distance from your sanitary sewer systems, which are not the typical septic systems, they're the, and I don't seem to mind note on what the systems are, but they require a lot more maintenance or in a lot more problematic. And I don't think the density needs to be increased. We've got enough problems with roads. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and move, we defer this one as well, to give me some more time to dig into it, please.
All right, well, we'll handle it now, then, for two weeks?
Yes.
All right, so let's bring up a motion to defer item AB for two weeks. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. I wish to vote I.
Mr. Stone, I'll vote I, too.
Passes unanimously. Okay, that's deferred. Item AC, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, just would like to, for the public, to hear a little bit more about this next phase and the work we're doing to address homelessness, and, hi, Jamie.
Yes, absolutely. So, the HMIS is the homeless management information system, that's the database that we've been using for years. And AC, I believe, is just the, the contract, the HUD contract that we approve for HMIS and coordinated entry every year, I think for the past, close to a decade at least, that we've been working on this HMIS contract. Did you have other specific questions?
And then how does that relate to item AZ?
Yes, so AZ, we have been the HMIS lead, and we've been passing through and contracting through the Homeless Alliance with a vendor, and so as part of the work we're doing as lead agency to streamline resources and centralized performance management, we're going to bring that in-house and, and contract with that vendor directly instead of the pass-through.
And since homelessness was the number-one item we heard earlier today, would you mind explaining, I heard you say streamlined services, what was the problem previously that this new approach is addressing?
No, no problem. Homeless Alliance has been doing an excellent job, and we're really grateful for their support and their leadership in this particular function. However, it's typically a lead agency function, and so when you're looking at the system as a whole, it's best for the lead agency to provide the data management and the coordinated entry processes, and allow the service providers to function like as service providers and do that direct service. Additionally, we're contracting with the same vendor that has been providing the service for the past nine years, so there's, there's no change with the vendor, we're just not subbing through the Homeless Alliance and are paying that vendor directly.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, it's, an analogy here would be how, when I was a middle school teacher, my job was to be a middle school teacher, but since we didn't have mental health counselors in the school, I found myself being mental health counselor as well, and that took attention from, excuse me, it took attention away from instruction. It sounds like something similar has been happening to our different service providers, like CSU or Homeless Alliance, et cetera, you have people who need to be focuses, focusing, excuse me, on connecting people to stabilizing community support services and housing, but we're finding themselves having to do all this other work as well. Is that what I'm about hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so that analogy, that, that tracks for me, so it helps me understand what you're doing. I just wanted the public to hear it, since homelessness was far and away.
Yeah, absolutely.
So thank you for that, and thank you for reaching out to me on Friday as well to see if I had any questions.
Absolutely.
Before you leave, question, as far as your, the office, have you all relocated downstairs?
Yes, we are here.
Okay, so just curious, with the folks that we have outside, that, that are residing outside our doors, how, what does that outreach look like in the ways that even, I'm hearing, this management system is supposed to work?
So the homeless management information system is a database, and so they are engaging with outreach workers that are coming by and contacting them where they are. The space is a public park, so we're sending outreach teams to engage, make sure they're aware of services, they're connected, and their needs are being met, and the outreach team will enter that data into the homeless management information system, so that we can just have like a history of the services that they're receiving, where they're touched, the system, and can like track them through time, and hopefully on their journey to housing.
So, my understanding is that we have folks that are outside of our walls, we have a office that's closer to them than anything, but we're sending people out there to talk to them instead of us being able to connect with them ourselves?
I mean, we, we do speak to people, but I am not an outreach staff member, and there are people that are trained and have a particular skill set in providing those supportive services, and so I, I let them do that work that they're trained to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item AH, Councilwoman Nice?
Thank you. Wanted more information as far as, I know this was brought before us within the last couple of months, so just wanted clarification, when this plan will start, and what we are looking forward to as far as the improvements for this particular library.
Good morning, Debbie Miller, Public Works Department. This item will put the plans out for bid for a roof replacement, new heating and cooling for the roof. It also will include some security, sidewalk repairs, and just some general interior stuff. So we would expect that this project would begin late this year and be completed in the summer.
Okay, so we don't have a actual deadline for, or start date for it?
Not until we get a contractor.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
That brings us to item AP, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, we should've asked you to hang out, but you're getting some steps in, so I hear that's healthy. Yes, if you wouldn't mind just kinda educating the public on what's going on here, and then I'll have a follow-up, please.
And this project, this, this actual item is a, an amendment to the contract for the engineering services. We were able to acquire some ACOG funding to help with this bridge replacement, and it includes a 10-foot trail on one side from Santa Fe over to Western. And we wanted to get across I-235, we are planning, so it goes over to Santa Fe, it goes across I-235, and then we'll come back west to Western.
Ooh, so then that leads to my follow-up. Am I to understand, if I'm looking at the geography here, this would connect on 63rd across the bridge to the east, on the one hand, but then if I were heading back west, it would get me to Western, which, if I'm doing the math, would also connect to Classen in between Western and 235, right?
It should, and we're also looking to extend it to Deep Fork with some alternative, alternative tap funding, so we're gonna be applying for that, too.
So we're applying, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to speak, speak over you, I just got really excited, which my brain does that sometimes, so forgive me, but it sounds like we have an opportunity with this trail on 63rd to connect to the Deep Fork Trail, which is currently under construction, which means, right, people would be able to move up and down 63rd Street and get all the way, once they got to Classen, up to the Britton District. Those are neighborhoods connected ultimately back down there to like Whole Foods, to groceries in ways that, I mean, oh my god, that was just wonderful. So I just wanted to hear that in public, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to AS and AT. Councilman Stone, you wanted to defer those, we could do that with one motion. Two weeks. There we go. This is for AS and AT together. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes to defer.
Mine's not loading, I'm yes.
Passes unanimously. And finally, item BG for a separate vote, we could take a motion on that. Are we completely hung up at this point? Oh, there we go, you just never know when it's gonna pop up. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on item BG. Passes six to two, and now we are on the remainder of the consent docket, save those previously approved or deferred. We have a motion and a second, cast your vote. Passes unanimously. All right, item 10, the concurrence docket, we have items A through I, we could take with one motion. Have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are now at item 11, items for individual consideration. Item 11A was previously deferred. Item 11B has two items, the first is an amendment to the master design statement, and the second is an ordinance that was recommended for approval rezoning 13900 North Bryant from PUD 1946 to PUD 2025. This was deferred from October 8th, Councilwoman Nice.
Thank you. I do have a request from the applicant to defer for two weeks, and I will oblige that conversation for us to be able to look at working a little further through this application. So I do wanna thank my residents that did come, and I apologize, and I hope that we'll be able to bring this back again in two weeks with a better consensus of, of what we are working to do. So I'll just put it that way. So with that, I will ask for a deferral for two weeks.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to defer this item for two weeks, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're on item 11C. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing a portion of a north-south utility easement on Lot 1 in Block 2 of Summit Ridge, addition, and other lots in Summit Ridge. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. Again, this is to just close those easements for future development, and I will move for approval, and hope that we can work through this a little differently as far as this easement process is concerned in the future.
Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item D is a public hearing regarding the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. We do have someone who has signed up to speak under this public hearing, Wendy Hampton.
Hi, everyone, my name's Wendy Hampton, I'm the executive director of the Western Avenue Shopping and Dining District, and I just wanted to give you an update of the progress that we've made over the past year in our area. We've, were able to install three digital speed signs between Northwest 36 and 50th Street to slow down the traffic, and we were having issues with that, and we were able to get those installed, and we have seen a decrease in the speeding in our area, so we're very happy about that. We have over 100 members in our area, 60 of which are paid now, so we have a lot of support from the area. We were awarded a grant this year from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation for around $20,000 for a landscaping project that we did for the entrance into I-44 and Northwestern across from McGuinness, and also the median right there. So we've spruced that all up with some plants and landscaping, and it's looking great. Our flagship event is this Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00, the Taste of Western, and we have over 21 food and wine vendors that will be coming together to raise money this year for our Route 66 sculpture that we're trying to build, which would be diagonal from Bishop McGuinness next to Gold Leaf Nutrition, and the off-ramp going east on I-44 and Western. And really, that's all I have, I just kinda wanted to give you an update about what we were doing, and if you guys have any questions?
Well, hi, hi, hello. First, great fall colors, love the glasses. So I just wanted to, in public, invite Western Avenue District on November the 19th to, we're gonna do a Ward 2 bond meetup. A bond, we do our bond election every about 10 years, and the sort of streetscape that you all had years ago, that kinda set in motion, I would suggest to everybody, a lot of what the other districts are now doing, you all are on our kinda priority list heading into the bond for going back and doing some finishing touches, we might wanna call them, and so I would wanna make sure that you and your folk send some representatives to that event, it's gonna be that evening at Oklahoma City University, I think we're looking about 5:30 to 7:30. Our, we will send an official email to you, but I wanted to say this in public to you, and I would want you to get your imagination going. Like you heard earlier, the presentation about ease of traffic, and you all have had to deal with that, homelessness, and just kinda think, I was just driving from grocery shopping the other day, heading south back to my neighborhood in Paseo, and I saw a couple with a stroller at about, was it where we removed the median and put in the flashing?
Yep.
And the cars would not let them go. Like, the cars, y'all, would not let...
A pedestrian.
A pedestrian go, even with signs on both sides of the street saying pedestrians, pedestrians, and I, I, I've almost never felt more honor in my life than to just boom, break, and just like, no. But the, everyone heading north just kept going. So we've really gotta think about, what can we do now in the bond infrastructure to kinda help you all there, really set an even further standard?
Well, thank you. We have discussed our wish list, so mostly we wanna be able to connect all the sidewalks, all the way from 36 down to the highway, and then you'll be able to walk over the highway with the sidewalks that are already there, and then with our art sculpture, we wanna redo the crosswalks so that people can safely visit the art sculpture. So we'll talk about that on...
Yes, we will. I love Ward 2, I love you all so much, this, oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope, okay, thank you.
All right, that was the only person who signed up to speak on the public hearing, so we'll close that in advance to the resolution found in D2 adopting and confirming an assessment role for the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item E is an ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role, this is, continue to be related to the same items for the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item F is an ordinance on final hearing relating to consolidation of fire code appeals boards. This is the third of three meetings on this topic, it was already presented, and there was already a public hearing, we could take a motion for passage today. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item G is an ordinance on final hearing that is relating to the general schedule of fees, specifically stormwater fees. There was, this is the third meeting, there was a presentation and a public hearing today, could be final passage if that is the council's will. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item H is an ordinance to be introduced today, set for public hearing on November 5th and final hearing on November 19th. And we have a presentation.
Amy Madera, our chief human resource officer, will give us an update on the changes that are proposed in our retirement system.
Thank you, city manager. Good morning, Mayor, Council, Amy Madera, Human Resources Department. Before you today, we have an amendment to amend the city ordinance for Chapter 40. The background with it, our retirement office and municipal councilors have been working with our outside tax council to review and implement some changes regarding to Chapter 40. And it's due to record keeper change for our deferred compensation plan. It's also to approve the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority to be allowed to be able to join our 457 plans effective January 1st, 2025. As approved previously on the October 22nd agenda consent item BA, with our Oklahoma City Deferred Compensation Board also met on October 14th and recommended the changes to be approved by city council. Some of the changes, one, we had some changes with our definitions. The current ordinance includes our account numbers with the current money purchase plan. And so right now, we're gonna update the ordinance and just basically have it more specific rather than having a specified plan. We're also gonna have some updates around our eligibility. Our employees, it's gonna basically state their employees in the system may elect to be within the purchase plan. Also, we're adding our COCP to employees to be able to participate for non-represented up to $1,000 per year. We also had some clarifications within the ordinance. We added, we noted that their employees have to be active members. The state pension plans are not eligible to participate as part of the system. If they're uniformed or police, they're under, they cannot elect to be in the OKers with the city's pension plan, because they've got their own. And we also made some modification for wording of years of service and with a maximum of 100% of their final average compensation. And then there was a typo error within item 40-83. And we're making those amendments. The schedule of today's introduction, public hearing, we have slated for November 5th, and a final hearing is slated for November 18th and available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, so today is introduction. If the council wants to make that motion again, public hearing November 5th, final hearing November 19th. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
I would like to vote yes, please.
Passes unanimously. Item I is a public hearing regarding an ordinance proposed at our last meeting affecting water rates. And Anthony Carfeng has signed up to speak.
Good morning. Anthony Carfeng, 2324 Northwest 26th Street in Ward 2. Manager Freeman, municipal finances are quite a bear to try to decipher. So I recall two weeks ago, Councilwoman Nice, you asked about potential allocations between rate revenues versus general funds and how that might play into it. And then additionally, if I recall, earlier this year, there was a big discussion around redoing or revising impact fee structure. And I know this is purely about rates. So it would, the cost or the revenue would be based purely on service usage. But in terms of, say, impact fees, if we were to annex some land and zone it R4, and there's one house way out in the middle of nowhere that needs new piping, do impact fees help account for that?
We wouldn't extend a line in a situation like that. The owner would have to extend the line. So in most of those situations, we aren't extending our system. It's developments that are extending the system.
Okay. And then for infill development, where there's already some level of plumbing, and for instance, around Bryant and Memorial, if there happened to be some infill development to increase density, that would lead to more tax revenue on already existing lines. Does the element of water and sewer services benefit from that densification, say, from a two property per acre versus nine? Fire call, the numbers. Does that densification benefit in these sorts of...
Yeah, certainly when we have more customers tied into the system. I mean, it's effect on the system, but certainly it benefits the system.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, that was the only person who signed up to speak under the public hearing. So we will close that public hearing in advance to the public hearing found at item J regarding dilapidated structures. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not. So we'll advance to the resolution at item 2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
I also would like to vote with you all and say yes.
Passes unanimously. Now, item K, the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not. And so we will advance to the resolution, declaring that the structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, item L, the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
They have not. And so we will advance to the resolution, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11M is a public hearing. M1 is a public hearing regarding a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving an additional allocation not to exceed half a million dollars from tax increment District 2. There's no presentation, because this was at our last meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak in the public hearing?
No, they haven't.
They have not. And so we'll advance to the joint resolution found at M2, that is with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving this additional allocation not to exceed half a million dollars, with 400,000 of it to come from tax increment District 2, et cetera. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11N is a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a general and a runoff election in the city of Oklahoma City for the purpose of electing council members from Wards 1, 3, 4, and 7. General election will be February 11th. Runoff, if necessary, will be April 1st. Take a motion on the resolution. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item O is an executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding Thompson and Hill as co-administrators of the estate of Benny Joe Edwards versus DeRoy Holman and the city of OKC. We'll go ahead and take the vote on executive session now, and then handle that at the end of other business. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. As stated, we'll go into executive session at the conclusion of our other business. Item P1, claims recommended for approval. Executive session is not requested by staff. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That concludes our votes for the day. I'm gonna step away and get my flu shot, which I strongly recommend everyone do. Our vice mayor is out, so the duty of bringing this meeting home falls to our most recent past vice mayor. Vice Mayor Peck, you are presiding.
Thank you, mayor. So we'll move to item 12, comments from council. Ward 1.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just wanted to make a brief comment and kind of recognize our police department. We don't always get to do this very often, but last week, there was a mental illness call that happened out on the overpass and on Kilpatrick, where a gentleman was debating whether to jump and take his life. And Master Sergeant Travis Woods answered that call. He has been a veteran of the Oklahoma City Police Department for over 30 years and was able to save that man's life. And so a lot of times, especially with the nature of this call, we don't get to hear a lot of these things that these guys do. And I just wanted to commend Master Sergeant Woods for his bravery and for the understanding of the situation and how he took charge of that and was able to ultimately be able to bring this gentleman down and get him the help he was needed. So other than that, that's all I've got for today. Thank you.
Ward 2.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple, about a handful of items. One, I just wanted to take us back to the last council meeting and what happened right afterwards, which was I rushed from here, just scarfing food, to go to a faculty meeting at Oklahoma City University where I teach. Normally, you know, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I reserve for council-related meetings with staff, residents, nonprofits. But once a month, on a Tuesday, I have to meet with all of the College of Arts and Sciences professors. And that was kind of a doozy. You have to turn off the council brain and now enter back into professor brain. So, you know, went from that, but then put the council hat back on, because then I rushed from that 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. meeting over to the groundbreaking for MAPS 4's diversion hub. So I just wanted to say what a wonderful opportunity it was to see that project break ground, to hear elected officials, from Mayor Holt to Councilwoman Hammond, speak on it, to see all the staff at diversion hub just rooting on their leadership. I mean, truly there to root her on and rooting on the Arnell Foundation as well for their support. Rushed over here to City Hall to then be at a legislative meeting. And so that's what Tuesdays and Thursdays are often like for me. A couple days later, I had the honor in Ward 2 on a Thursday evening to go to guest room records near where you heard Western Avenue, well, in Western Avenue District. And what did I get to do? I got to see my closest friends over the last 25 years do the first public listening of their new record, ChatPile's new record, God's Cool World. Their first record was God's Country. Really well received. They'd gone on tour. I got to go to Copenhagen with them last summer. I ain't been to Europe in 20 years, almost, and that was on scholarship that first time. So scraped together some savings to go join them last summer and learn about their infrastructure from bike lanes to sidewalks. But yeah, we got to go there, and they just had like this line that just went on and on of people just coming up, asking for signatures, nerding out about their album. And again, I just want to shine that light on them because they're shining a light on us as a city. Like, when they're in these national and international news sites, and they're talking about the talent this city is producing, this kind of goes back to what Councilman Hinkle was talking about last council, about the talent from our culinary arts, right? Like, so too our music arts. And so I just, it was so cool to see my friends in that setting. The next night, in Ward 2, got to go to the Tower Theater where RuPaul's Drag Race winner Shay Coule performed onstage, National Coming Out Day. Performed onstage on National Coming Out Day. That's who we're bringing to Oklahoma City. Just as two weeks earlier, at the previous council meeting, I mentioned all the Asian district performers who came from Nebraska to Kansas to join our Asian district. That's who we're attracting, right? And then I walked over to the Pump Bar from the Tower to join ChatPile for a celebratory drink. It was just such a wonderful week of maps and music. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to people here on this council, mayors. It was so good. I didn't get to hug your neck or see and say hi to you, Councilwoman Nice. But my book release, just seeing everyone from my second mom, we like to call her, Laura, I've known since I was five. She was my best friend's mother. And there she was, sitting on the front row, but looking all the way back and just seeing people that I've known all my life from different walks of life. That's why I just went through all this. You all don't, each of us have our own backstories outside of our work on council. And so sometimes for me, I don't know how the rest of you all feel. I feel like I'm compartmentalizing parts of myself to serve in this role. But my whole self was what I felt like was finally on display that Thursday. My love of teaching, my love of storytelling, my love of community. I just feel whole in a way that I have never in my entire life ever felt. And I just want to say thank you to those of you I got to see who came that day. Councilwoman Peck, Hammond, Nice, Mayor Holt. I didn't get to see some of you because it was really well attended. Councilman Hinkle, thank you for the chili. I know. I saw your note on my desk. He couldn't be there that night. He had a chili cook-off. And I was like, chili? I want some of that. And so I can't wait to hear it. Award-winning chili, I hear. So yes, just thank you for that. And then the next day, as a Coda, I got to go play basketball with the women's basketball team at OCU. They do a professor practice where they invite professors from across the university, even the university president. And we go up against them. I see Councilwoman Nice already making the faces. Yes, I made two three-pointers. But my best friend, Chair, that's right, Craig. Two three-pointers. It doesn't matter out of how many, Bradley. It absolutely does not matter. But actually, to that point, my best friend, I've known since I was 15. She and her husband, Phil, who served in the military, they were up here. And Phil and I got to go out there and shoot. And she was just making fun of us because we just kept missing. But no, it was just so fun to be with those students. So thank you for letting me share all that. That's kind of what a couple weeks in the life of Ward 2 is like. So thank you all.
Thank you, James. I just have one item. So tonight is the first of the general obligation bond public workshops that will be held at the Oklahoma City Outlet's Food Court at 74, let me get the address. the Oklahoma City Outlet's Food Court at seventy-four, let me get the address, it's Council in Reno, seventy-six twenty-four West Reno Avenue. And we start at 6:30, I'll be out there. We hope that many residents from all the wards will make it out. If you have an opportunity and you need to do some shopping, come out to the mall, shop a little, and then come let me know what infrastructure, roads, parks you are most interested in seeing improvements at. If you are not able to make it out, we obviously have other options, electronic options for city residents, and those are available to you at the OKC.gov/go website where you can drop a pin and leave some comments. So, we are really looking for the city residents to speak your mind. We do hear a lot of your minds speaking through our offices, and so, this is a really opportunity to do that again, and we hope that you will. And that is all I have for today. So, Ward four.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Cooper, I'm really excited to hear that your book opening was such a fantastic event. I apologize, I wasn't able to attend. Councilman Hinkle had paid me $5 to vote on his chili, it was the best chili, so I had to attend that instead. Thank you.
I can't take you guys anywhere. Ward five.
I really don't have too awful much to add today, other than I'm going to concede defeat. Two Fridays ago, I went to the Choctaw-Southmore football game down at Southmore, and Choctaw has a kid that's going to go a long, long way. His name's Juju Smith, and if you haven't watched him, you need to watch him. So, they beat the tar out of Southmore. I hate to say it, but it was a blowout, so.
Thank you. Ward six. Ward seven.
Yes, I would say the kids have fun, though, either way, for that little blowout, because I heard about that, too, with Southmore. And I'm curious to know if there is some bean footage of this basketball play.
Yes.
I want to see it. I have to see it to believe it. And again, congratulations on your book. It was a joy to support you and be with you for that time. I just had a couple things. First, I wanted to say thank you to our residents that came out for our GO bond meeting we had last night at the Willoughby Johnson Recreation Center. And the reason it was important to have it there was because that was our 2017 GO bond project, so people can actually see and envision what those projects could look like as far as them coming to our particular ward and area. And I want to also encourage all of our residents, the neighborhoods, our neighborhoods, as well as our churches, and/or just ad hoc community people that get together to have those meetings in a box, so we can continue that advocacy of what we need to get done within our specific wards and our communities. So, very grateful for all the city staff that was present because there was a lot of city staff, and it's unique when our residents really get the opportunity to say hello and/or speak about all of the things that are happening around them. So, just wanted to take time to, again, say thank you to everyone and reemphasize the OKC.gov/go to make sure you fill out the survey and find out more information about why this is happening. Not to say this is, you know, I know some people don't think this is the best process, but right now, this is the process that we have for us to use, and I hope those folks would be interested in being able to participate. I just wanted to commend the Oklahoma Baptist State Convention. They are celebrating 127 years, and normally, they go all across the state, but this week, they are in Oklahoma City, and we are very grateful for them to be here. And when I did the math of 127 years, that puts us back to 1897, and they're still operating. And that also puts us back to, last time I was here with us, I talked about Langston University. We celebrated homecoming this past Saturday and the accomplishments of our great and dear Langston University. So, very grateful that we have an Oklahoma City campus that we can still support, as well as the only HBCU, which is a historically black college and university on this side of the Midwest. So, we are the furthest west you can get when it comes to these types of universities. So, it's very unique to Oklahoma, and I think it's very unique to Oklahoma City that we are able to have a campus that resides within Oklahoma City as well. So, want to continue to support our Langston Lions and all of their efforts that we have. I just also wanted to speak a little story about, some of us may or may not have heard about a woman by the name of Ms. Boyd. And Ms. Boyd, unfortunately, many years ago, she was very active within our communities and doing different committees and service, and unfortunately, her health failed, and she ended up in the hospital for a month, and that took the turn for the worse as far as her property is concerned. And just most recently, we ended up, within the last couple of years, having to declare her property dilapidated. And on the background, we were trying to work to figure out how we could assist this woman in saving her property. The bulldozer was at her house that day, and we were able, not myself, but being able to lean on our nonprofits such as Restore Homes and Restore OKC, and them reaching out to other entities to say, "Help us help her." It took a lot of work, and I am so happy to say that on this past Friday, she had a housewarming because her home was able to be fully restored and repaired. It was down to the studs and the wood. We had a new roof and all of the things that took place, and that's because of volunteers. And I'm bringing that up because there has to be some type of way when we look at these processes and policy of how our residents can be better cared for. I know sometimes we have residents that are too proud to say what's happening to them, and I'm pretty sure this is where we were with Ms. Boyd. She was a little too proud to tell us while she's out helping everybody else, she was too proud to say she needed help herself. And now, we ended up in this position to where now she owes over $5,000 plus $2,000 in fees and interest on her property because of us continuously citing her in her property, which now, I understand, is in the county's hands, but again, the policy starts here in how we work on understanding what's happening with our neighbors. And, you know, there's no fault of hers, maybe there has to be a way for us to also let others know that we have resources available, which also brings me to the point of hoping that even with that information that we hand out when we go to neighbors' houses with our code enforcement, that we are updating that information constantly, because I've heard from some of our residents that it is outdated as far as that information. So, it doesn't help if we're giving them information that they can't even use. So, I'm hoping that even with that, we're able to work in ways that what happened to Ms. Boyd doesn't happen to another resident within our city, because it is very devastating for her, I'm sure, to have to walk and drive past her house and not be able to live in it until now. But a good story came out of it because she is at home and very grateful that she is there. Another, I just wanted to offer my condolences. I know the last couple of weeks were pretty devastating as far as some of the things that were happening in our streets with our young people, but one of those stories hits close to home, and the reason it does is because we had one of our Live Free OKC folks, one of our community violence interrupters that goes out in the community to ensure that other families are safe and protected from gun violence. His son became one of those victims. And he's been here to talk about how one of those parks, recreation centers that we closed was a place of rest, in a place of a way that he could find a getaway as a young person. And I'm pretty sure he did talk about his son and said his son also went to this particular community center as well, just a senseless killing because somebody wanted something that he had. But again, thinking about how these particular conversations and cases continue to be a subject matter within our communities are very devastating, and so, just to hear that even one of our people in our community that works every day to prevent this from happening couldn't even stop it for his own son is devastating. And I'm hoping, again, that we're able to look at better ways that we can serve our residents when it comes to even lighting, because I know that's some of these issues. We talk about the nuisance abatement when it comes to private property and our convenience stores and those types of businesses in order of them being able to abate a nuisance when it comes to their particular property as well. So, again, my thoughts are with all of those that, especially this past couple of weeks, it's been pretty hard to hear all of these things that are continuing to take place. But on a lighter note, I do want to encourage folks to come on out this Saturday to Diggs Park. We're going to be doing some work with OKC Beautiful, volunteering and having some fun, planting some trees. It's a beautiful park, if you didn't know, it's a historic park, and we're very grateful that we're able to do that with the OKC Beautiful, as well as our garden neighborhood. And there's more information on OKC Beautiful's page if anybody wants to be a part of that. So, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on to Citizens to Be Heard, Councilmember Cooper remembered one thing briefly he'd like to speak on.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Given all that backstory, I forgot about the future. We have a Public Safety Advisory Information Session that's going to be this Thursday, October 24th, at 6:00 p.m., Royal Rogers Gardens, that's at 3400 Northwest 36. So, what Councilwoman Nice is talking about with violence interruption programs, you know, we had thirty-nine recommendations that are on the table right now and various levels of, excuse me, implementation. And so, this is an opportunity for residents to come and hear from our representative, Nicole Maldonado, from city staff, to learn where we are with everything from the mental health, alternative response implementation, violence interruption, and I'd love to see you there. And then, on a lighter note, staff told me, I almost forgot, I think it's Debbie Martin's birthday? So, I just wanted to say to an institution like Debbie Martin, "Happy Birthday." I almost forgot until started hearing Councilwoman Nice talk about lighter news, like lighter news. So, anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. And then, just one brief moment, I'd like to acknowledge the McAtee family and the passing of Councilmember Larry McAtee, who sat in this seat for the twenty years preceding me, and the contribution to this community that he has given, not only in his service in this seat, but in his service to the Lord. And so, we are just grateful for all of his contributions to the community and to the family. Our prayers are with you, and the funeral is tomorrow for those who have not seen the announcement yet. So, thank you very much for that. And then, we'll close that item and move on to Citizens to Be Heard, and the only citizen signed up today is Mr. Ronnie Kirk. Ronnie, if you'll state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is 23. When they had the first shooting, at the first football game in Dell City, a month after that, state fire started. I mean, and Dell City had a thousand people running at the same time. September, the fire started, 2,000 or 2,500 people running at the same time. You know, I already talked about this gun control, this open carry law Oklahoma got. I said, "What if it happens in Bricktown?" I stood right here. Three weeks ago, it happened in Bricktown, across the street from Bass Pro. The media says, in a nice way, a group of people, we all know that's a turf war in the south side of town, at the community center, event center. Same thing happened. They say two groups of people. It's a turf war, all for the lack of money for the city. They need to repeal this gun law where we can enjoy ourselves here and still have every, and we're thinking about building some new buildings here now? What if it happened at the new center that you're getting ready to build? 5,000 people running at the same time? Let's make the city like it's supposed to be, beautiful, it's growing, where we can all enjoy it, still have to worry about run, duck, and cover. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. With that, we can move on to the final item, and we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about executive session, so I need to call the council meeting back to order.
You haven't had a vote on it yet. Unadjourned.
Okay. Unadjourned. Okay. Sorry about that, guys. Sorry about that, guys.
We'll be in the legislative session.
Oh, my God.